Let me know. All right. Um, council will call this meeting to order. And Suzanne, would you do roll call, please?
Thank you. Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Gier.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which is fair, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're on to item three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. Item A is discussion and appointment of council member to fill the vacant council seat. Suzanne.
Thank you. For those that weren't with us a little bit earlier, we just concluded the interviews of the four council candidates interested in becoming council members. I just would like to go over where how we got here and where to go where we're going next. So as a result of council member Case winning the election and becoming Mayor Case, her seat was vacated on council. And council gets to choose how they would like to fill the vacancy. And there are different ways they can fill the vacancy set to us by our charter. And it's in Charter section 3.5. So council could could make the decision to appoint any qualified person. They can conduct an app open application process. Or they could appoint the person who receives the next highest vote in the last municipal election, as long as it's within six months. Following consensus of the council, the council agreed on April eighth, um, April fourth, excuse me, that they would do the application process. I shared with council that I would start the advertising for the applicants interested on April eighth. We would run the ad for 30 days. We would close it on May eighth at 5:00 P. M. We requested that we would receive letters of interest from candidates interested in applying and that were qualified. To be qualified under section charter of the Charter 3.4, the candidates must be a citizen of the United States. They must be at least 18 years of age and a resident of the city of Woodland Park for one year preceding the election or the appointment. I received five applications. One application has been disqualified because of residency. And so the applications that we vetted and met all of those qualifications were from Carol Harvey, Don DeZellum, Don Hoing, and Eric Lockman. Council just finished their interviews of these four individuals. Let's see here. Now, we've met with um, council Mayor Case. And we decided the process that we would follow this evening conclude after the interviews. The process decided after following the interviews is that I will be handing out a ballot to each council member that I would like to share and show um, to the public. It is a ballot and each ballot has each council member's individual name on it. So for instance, this one says Mayor Case on it. And so it says vote for one. It lists the four candidates that you just interviewed. I will be passing these ballots out to each one of you. You'll be voting and picking your one choice. We'll be collecting the ballots back from each one of you. I will be reading them into the record, and that's the important part for the public to know. This is not a secret ballot. I'll be reading them into the record. I will be saying Mayor Case voted for so and so. We'll go through that process. If we have a clear winner following this process, council can then at that time make the motion to have that person appointed. If someone is appointed this evening, I'm prepared to administer the oaths of office. I have four oaths of office here for the four people that we've interviewed, and I'm prepared to administer that oath. If for some reason there's a tie, we can try again. And we can try again, and we can see where we go from there. So that's the process that was agreed upon by Mayor Case and the rest of the council has agreed with that process. And now it is up to you. You can discuss. You can just have me pass out the ballots. Now I'll serve at your pleasure.
Counsel, you want to just take the ballot and see where we go?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
All right, Suzanne, if you would.
As long as I can write an explanation.
I I would actually just like to make a little comment.
And then if you just fold them and I'll come back and I'll collect.
So I wanted to say first, thank you all for applying. Um, you are all strong candidates, and this was this is going to be harder than I expected, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mayor, I will read these into the record.
Please.
They're just in order of the way I collected them. So I have Mayor Case has voted for count for Carol Harvey. Councilmember Baldwin has voted for Carol Harvey. Councilmember Gier has voted for Carol Harvey. Councilmember Jones has voted for Don Hoing. Councilmember Smith has voted for Carol Harvey. And council Mayor Protem Nakai has voted for counsel for Carol Harvey. So that would be that's um, five votes for Carol Harvey, one voice vote for Don Hoing. So the winner of this would be Ms. Harvey.
Thank you. All right, council is any questions, any comments? Okay, Suzanne, would you like to bring?
We need Harvey. We need a motion.
And make a motion to appoint Carol Harvey to the open council seat.
I'll second.
Okay, Case.
Yes.
Nakai.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Gier.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And now, Mayor, if you if it's okay, I'd like to administer the oath of office.
Please, thank you.
I'd like to have where's Carol? Well. I'll have you face the council. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Carol Harvey.
I, Carol Harvey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
For the city of Woodland Park.
For the city of Woodland Park.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. I'll have you sign this. I'll have you sign this, and then you can take your official seat. We don't have a name tag for you. We I mean, we'll find one, but we don't have it for this evening yet. So we'll just wait a moment as Ms. Harvey takes her seat.
Well, she's coming up. I'm going to go ahead and and take us to item 3B. Never mind, we just did that. I'm going to take us to 3C, which is a presentation from the Woodland Park School District regarding the 1.09% city sales tax. And I'd like to welcome President of the Board Mick Bates and Superintendent Ken Witt to the podium. And we do have your presentation up on the screen.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Congratulations, Ms. Harvey. Welcome back. In the recent signing of the intergovernmental agreement signed March 26, 2024, by both the city and the district, it calls for an annual review of the IGA, intergovernmental agreement to the city by July 15 of each year. The original IGA, uh, I had a conversation with the mayor about this earlier this week. The original IGA used the word preceding year. And through what we think is a potential typo missed by all parties who looked it over, preceding replaced proceeding replaced preceding. We agree that that probably needs to be adjusted back to proceeding.
Mick, I also shared that with our attorney, and he agrees with that.
Okay, so we can get. Yeah, okay, very good.
Thank you.
So under those terms, uh, we brought both tonight. I originally had this coming years. We have included this year that is coming to a close. And if we go to the next slide, please. If you take a look at this pie chart, which is our total total general fund revenue, you see there that local sales tax is 11% of that pie, which which is substantial uh, to the district. So this is a a very important piece of that 11%. And I just wanted to address that. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Witt to take you through the following pie charts and proceed ahead here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Carol.
Thank you, Director Bates. Uh, thank you, Board, for giving us an opportunity to present to you tonight. Welcome back to the board, uh, to the council. I shouldn't say board, uh, Director Harvey. We have of the uh, next slide, please. We have of the sales tax use for the upcoming year, we've already presented the budget, the preliminary budget. It will be approved next month for the for the public meeting, but we wanted to give you this information. Uh, in the categories that we've established and reported on previously and and are continuing to report on, uh, we apply the sales tax to six categories, which are educator educator sales and salaries and benefits, certificate of participation, lease payments, facilities and maintenance, safety and security, technology, and innovative programming and other. Of those, uh, we we broke out this year to show the flow. Uh, first, the COP lease payments are applied out of the tax revenue. That was that was a an agreement of intent at at the origin of this. After that, we're compelled by the CDE and by practice to provide the funds uh, prorata to student headcounts in our schools. So the charter school gets the prorata for their headcount. The district gets the prorata for the remaining the the remaining schools' students headcount to spend across the district schools that are not operated under a charter. And so this shows you that breakdown. It's substantially educator salaries and benefits, which should come as no surprise. This is generally true in governance organizations. Uh, certainly, school is it's true in school districts at large that the lion's share of funding goes to salaries and benefits for educators. Uh, and with that, if you go to the next slide, I was asked, what is technology and innovation specifically? So I wanted to speak to that. I'm going to go and speak to it to both years, and then we'll we'll do just a quick comparison with last year. In technology, this current year, we applied it to our Chromebook replacements and our Chromebook uh, purchases. Um, during COVID, we had ESR funds that gave us additional technology funds, which we used for some Chromebooks. Now that the ESR funds have rolled off, we've replaced that, and we've invested back in Chromebooks for our students with uh, the sales tax use, uh, use of sales tax proceeds. In fiscal year 25, the technology will be a system called Skyward. Uh, we're replacing the the ERP system, the Enterprise Resource Planning System. We used an old software set that didn't tie into many of the ways that we have to account for our own funding and our own purchasing and approvals. This will make us quite a bit more efficient, and will also make our reporting much simpler for the school district. So that's the technology investment for the upcoming year. In innovation, uh, we've looked at new programs, uh, and we always look at new programs every year. But last year, we invested in a new curriculum called Capturing Kids' Hearts, which is a a character development program that we now use consistently through all of our district schools. And that implementation has gone very well, and you can really see the effect that it's having on attitudes and tone in our schools. And uh, we've just gotten rave reviews from our our schools and our administration on this. Next year, we're focusing on CTE upgrades. That's career and technical education upgrades. So in our upcoming budget, uh, we're hoping to invest those since we plan to. It's not like we're hoping to. We we will invest these funds in some upgrades to our culinary program, which has proven to be extremely popular. And we have more demand for it than we actually have resources to be able to do it. So we can upgrade some of those ovens and make certain that we're providing the the best experience we can for these students to prepare them for culinary arts. And we're also looking at a couple of other expansions to additional CTE programs. And as we get those approved, then that's that's where we'll apply any remaining innovation funds. But note that the innovation funds are a very small percentage, so that doesn't necessarily mean that there would be any left to do other programs. Then as, no, thank you. Then as a final comparison, I just wanted to point out that uh, this is the breakdown that we provided last year for the fiscal year 24 budget. Uh, it didn't break out the flow through to charter, so we added that because we got questions on it uh, for years going forward. You'll see that. But I did want to at least give you the comparison. The funding is fairly similar. But I'll flip back very briefly to notice that the total sales tax revenue for fiscal year 24 was 3.17 million. For fiscal year 25, it's 3.23 million. So congratulations, Woodland Park. It looks like you've had a little improvement in sales. And that's good news, and we certainly appreciate the uh, the small increment there in sales tax sales tax revenue from the 1.09%. Uh, and with that, is there any questions or uh, clarification?
I'd just like to make one comment. Um, the culinary program, that's been something that's been around for a while. And many different organizations that I've worked with, for one, was the holiday home tour. We they used to serve, prepare and serve things for our gala that we had prior to the home tour and different events that we had for the home tour. And just recently, um, last month, I believe, Lee Taylor at the Woodland Exchange Building also had them cater for the business after hours at their building last month as well. And it was delicious, and the kids were great, and just a kudos on that program. It's always been really cool.
Thank you. We're glad to have it back. We had to idle it for a a couple of years there when we didn't have someone to head it, but we're very glad to bring it back and reinvest in.
People should use them for their catering events.
Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, may I? Yeah, um, Mr. Witt, thank you. Um, I think it's uh, long overdue, but it's helpful. Now, in terms of the two initiatives there, technology and innovative programming, are those just, i- is this the only way they get funded through the sales tax?
No, certainly not. Okay, the sales tax is not adequate to many of the operations we run. It contributes to them.
So then what what comes to them to those two programs in particular is just the remainder of the 3.2, basically, right? You just, how do you? How do you allocate 1.6 and 2.5? Where does that come from?
Uh, simply as as an accounting exercise to say, here are our major investment pools.
Okay.
Here's where we're going to break it out. And uh, we we try and earmark a couple for innovation and technology and identify something that will get the the share that we have available.
Okay.
Uh, usually strategically, the things that we feel like are most important or most needed in the district.
Fair.
Ms. Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my first comment is to thank Mr. Witt and the the school board for making this presentation. Um, I think this is an important step forward, whether it was due to the restrictions of COVID or uh, changes in the directors on the BOE, any number of things. We kind of lost that relationship between the city council, the city staff, and the and the school district. And I'm so thankful that we've got that back on on track again. Um, and I certainly appreciate the breakdown that you provided tonight. I had one question, though. Could you talk about the flow the flow through for safety and security? How is that allocation being used?
Uh, yes, to some extent. I won't go into some detail.
Understand.
Uh, but one of the areas that were emphasized as a priority by the school board last year in planning for this year's budget was an investment in safety and security. Uh, we did lose our uh, SRO on campus, and we decided that we needed to make certain that we had both some armed presence and some additional response capabilities, as well as some facilities investment that supported that. And so we did invest in that area. We actually allocated a substantial amount to that. This is a a an important contribution, but uh, actually a modest share of the spend that went on.
And could you explain salaries and benefits? Could you talk about the um, increase for salaries that's occurred over the last two years?
Yes, over the last two years, Woodland Park School District has striven to bring up the base salary of our educators, particularly uh, in light of the fact that it's very difficult to live and work in Woodland Park. An awful lot of our educators continue to commute up the hill because it's an expensive place to live. We've tried to raise the baseline. Uh, two years ago, we gave an 8.5% increase, the largest in um, as as long as anyone can remember in Woodland Park, because they've gone two or three years with no increase. Uh, and then last year, we gave an additional 5%. We now have our starting salary for teachers over 42,000, which I'm very proud of.
And then those salaries, um, those are primarily for uh, faculty, not for administration.
Educators, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to try to be as gracious as Mrs. Harvey. I am sorely disappointed in this pie chart again. I would really like to see some line items, some accountability for how you're spending taxpayer money. I have a whole list here of of questions. First off, on on your presentation, what is a C? What is the COP lease payments? What are we paying for? What are you leasing that? What's happening there?
That's how new construction was funded.
Uh, new construction for?
Stomach Elementary was constructed. A middle school has been constructed. Those are financed through bond, which then results in a certificate of participation.
Leftover from before.
Continuing debt.
Yeah, continuing debt. And then um, my understanding when merit was brought in, merit academy was brought into the school district, that the school district would not be shouldering any of the debt that merit was coming with. Is that? Did I miss misunderstand? Loans.
Debt you're referring to?
I'm talking about personal loans that were taken out to start merit that are being repaid. Oh.
I'm not certain what you're talking about. I'm sorry. Personal loans?
Yeah, for the founders of merit. They took out loans to start that school.
Oh, individuals are welcome to borrow money as they would like.
Right, but they don't get paid back with my dollars, right?
Well, it depends on how the loan was fashioned, but I can't speak to merits financing from the founders.
Which is why it would be very helpful if we could get some um, line item accounting from the district about how the money's actually being spent. And I'm really trying to be respectful, Mr. Witt. And I'm really passionate about this. I came from a two of the largest school districts in Colorado. And so I'm very familiar with how school boards are supposed to work and superintendents are supposed to work. And this isn't it. And so some accountability is going to be real, real important going down the line. Um, you're another question. I guess this is a question, a statement, I'm not sure, but this innovation of using capturing kids' hearts, it's been around since the 90s, used very, very widely in Texas school systems. And are the parents aware that it's social emotional, uh, social emotional learning, which you said you didn't want in the schools? I mean.
We implemented a character development.
Yeah, it's called it's social emotional learning.
Okay, thank you for your characterization.
Yeah. I may have more questions later. Go ahead, sorry.
Anyone else?
Counsel, I have.
Yeah, so if if my numbers are correct, this, the 2025 budget is 4.8% lower due to the fact that we have less students. So are more of the sales tax dollars, because the it's gone, it continues to rise, going towards um, other things that are not on this list?
Uh, no, this list is has the entire total in it.
Okay.
But of course, it is rising, but as a percentage, the percentage is is reflected here. As are the law numbers, I might add.
So the percentage is basically staying the same, is what you're saying?
Uh, very, very.
They're very similar with, they're very similar with the pie charts. I'm just trying to understand.
That's right.
With increased revenue and decreased student count, how the percentages are staying the same is is my only math problem, so that's.
That's okay. It's a pie. If the pie gets bigger, which keeps us like this, the same, we get the same ratio.
Counsel, anything else?
Yeah, um, so thank you again for coming. Um, you know, I'm the only one up here that has a kid in the school district. And um, watching um, how things have went the last few years. Um, we've been getting, why we, I mean, council, have been getting a tremendous amount of feedback from the community that that you no longer need this tax and that we should, as council, discontinue it as quickly as we possibly can. And I don't know how many people have emailed us. Uh, Suzanne, it's been quite a bit so far. Um, and not to mention the fact that people have reached out to us personally. Um, I've watched my kids' quality of education decline um, since you've taken over as superintendent. And as I look at this completely inadequate and ridiculous attempt to explain how you're spending the sales tax, I'm I'm just, I'm just going to ask you directly. Why should we continue to give you this money? Why should the community of Woodland Park continue to fund this with the tremendous amount of discomfort and distaste in your specific behavior and the behavior of the existing board? Um, I would really love a clear answer as to why we should continue that funding.
I'd be happy to answer that, but I think my board president wants to respond to this.
You know, I'm going to be perfectly frank with you as well. Uh, I had a discussion with one of your fellow council members today. And I believe that there are a number of people in the community that are attempting to use these monies to punish this board. And I want to be very clear that the only people that would be get be punished by this by this being taken away are our children. Is is that when you you break that down to the bottom line, the the children and to some degree, the teachers will be the ones impacted by this. Whether this board is here for another 10 years or till the next election, uh, that I don't think that uh, this by any stretch is an avenue to take this out on the board or the superintendent, when ultimately our children will be the victims of pulling these monies. Monies are tight in in all districts, and this was the solution back in 2016. Well, it it's still a challenge. And you know, we have received a lot of negative feedback about the the uh, consolidating of schools and of moving the junior high to the high school. Folks, let me tell you, this this started being discussed back in 2009. Uh, the year that the new board came on board, the current superintendent, Matthew Neal, had hired a firm to come in and do an analysis of of what to do with our schools with declining enrollment and schools that are not not quite half, a little over half full, and their recommendation was to consolidate elementary schools. And their other recommendation was to move sixth to 12th grade to the high school. Now, let me say a couple of things. Uh, we did go through. Now, let me say a couple of things. Uh, we did go through COVID and it was difficult for everyone, but it was particularly difficult on our children because they lost a year to two years of education that they will not be able to recover.
Absolutely.
And so there are victims to, to all of this. But i- in saying that, prior to COVID, for about the last decade, I've come to learn that our buildings have been uh ignored to the most degree. When we went in there and did an analysis of our buildings, uh, when, when this board took over, there were many air handling units that did not work, but hadn't worked in years. So it's, it got kicked down the road. And I think that the people of this community should be proud of this school board, that we are gonna take this, take this on head-on and not pass the buck on down. And if, if we were to lose this funding, it's, it's a double whammy, folks. Uh, because we've got a lot of work to do to these buildings. We are consolidating buildings. We have no plans for Gateway this next year. There are rumors out there of all these things we're gonna do with it. It's a cooling off period for that building. What we'll do with it, there is, I assure you, there is not a plan down the road. We do not have one. This is genuinely a cooling off period. But I'm hoping you all understand that it, it should be easy to understand that the ultimate victims of your taking this monies away will be our children. And I'll tell you what, this job I've got doesn't pay very well. But, but I am here for one reason, and that is for our kids to get a sound education. And nationwide, but it also includes Woodland Park, our children are, are doing uh reading at grade level at less than fifty percent. You're gonna hear numbers bandied around, around forty-two, forty-three percent of the children of this nation. People say, well, this isn't a national issue. I, I beg to differ.
Oh, it is. No, I, where I come from, um, half my graduating class couldn't read at the grade level that they were at.
And then you take another issue like mathematics, that's, that's only, they're only performing a grade level thirty-eight percent. So I and many of the others of this board said, we've got to get in there and get back to academic academics, which is what our teachers are trained to do.
Except when, I'm glad you mentioned academics. So one of your decisions as a board was to adopt the American birthright standard um as an educational curriculum. My son, an eighth grader, had to do a project this year, and I can't believe I'm gonna say this out loud, but had to do a project this year where he had to explain why not all slavery was bad. And that comes from the American birthright standard. Um, you know, as a parent, when your kid comes home and goes, I have an assignment that I've got to get done, we're active and engaged parents, my wife and I, so we ask questions, you know, what's this assignment about? I was just absolutely flabbergasted by the, by the tenor of, of that assignment. And I know exactly where it came from. So if we're gonna have an honest conversation about academics, then that, that's not just about reading, writing and arithmetic. That's history. That's.
Absolutely.
That, that's all of it. And you know, again, there is, you talk about harming the kids and, and the funding, but you know, my understanding is the state of Colorado closed the budget gap or the per pupil funding gap that this tax was originally designed to kind of fill in for due to previous Colorado educational budgeting issues. So um, you know, we've had people talk to us very specifically about that and about why this tax is no longer needed. I, I know saying it's gonna harm the kids plays really well, you know, publicly, because none of us up here wanna harm kids. But that's just a soundbite. That doesn't really have any application in reality. So you know, it, it, one of the challenges that I, I know we have as a community is how do we fix this rift that has kind of divided the community between uh, you know, th- those that support the actions that you've taken, and I'm respectful to the fact that there, there are people that have supported the actions that you've taken. But there's also a very strong group of people that do not. I've been to several of your meetings. Um, you have no respect for transparency, no respect for public comment. I, I've never seen a situation where you limit public comment like that. You know, you, if you really wanna work on this division and you really want people like me to not be using my position in the way I'm using it, listening to your community is the, probably the very most number one thing you should be doing. You talk about, you know, uh, moving the middle school to the high school. Um, I don't have any fundamental problem with that personally, if the data supports it. You talk about closing Gateway, again, if the data supports it. Um, I'm also aware that, that, that consultant that you're referring to, closing Gateway wasn't the number one recommendation. It was a recommendation.
Counsel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus us back on topic.
Okay.
This topic is about the one point oh nine percent sales tax.
That's what I'm discussing.
Well, I, I'm going to, we have a long agenda this evening.
All right.
So make your point and let's, let's move on.
I have two quick questions, I hope, for Mr. Witt. Um, on the innovation programming and other, what is the other is the first question.
In this case, there is no other.
Okay, okay, but in, so can you just give me in broad strokes, an, an idea of what other would be in the future?
No.
You don't, okay.
Um, we haven't needed other, so I can't guess what we might do.
Okay, in the past, have we had an other?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. So the second question is, where do the administrator salaries get paid from? Are they paid from out of the sales tax or they paid from out of all the other income?
Uh, they're paid for out of the other income.
Okay. Anything else, Terry?
Miss, Mr. Witt, you are aware that there's the per pupil funding is gonna be higher. Um, rural districts are supposed to get more money also from the state. Um, the, the gap between what's mandated and what's funded is closing slowly but surely.
It has increased almost every year for the last ten years.
And let me tell you, after the years and years and years of working with kids, the line that taking this money away from the kids pulls at my heart because that's not what I'm about. But there has to be some, some balance and um a forensic audit might go a long way with this community um to make sure that the money's going where.
We go through an annual audit?
I know, I know, and I know what the CDE requires, and it's skeletal compared to a forensic audit. They're not looking for fraud. I mean, to put it bluntly, they're looking for accounting procedures, so. No.
If you're interested in a forensic audit, let us know. We could arrange one.
We're interested in a forensic audit, and I understand that the district's not gonna pay for it, but this community will. Not the council, the community.
We're not gonna do a forensic audit for the Woodland Park School District, but if someone would like to go out and do it, that's fine.
You're gonna provide access to the, to the, the accounting, though? Is that what you're saying?
Financial transparency of the state is required. Those, the financial transparency website has all transactions available.
Is, did Mr. Mike Miles that's in Houston now, did he learn the same sort of accounting in Colorado that he's taken to Texas and now is under investigation for? You know, you know, Mr. Miles, right?
Uh, I don't know anything of Mr. Miles affairs, but if you do, feel free to share.
It's in the headlines nationally today, so.
I fail to see what this has to do with the IGA budget.
It doesn't. It has to do with how you're spending the money from the IGA.
Mayor Case?
Yes.
Uh, just to, to bring it back to your point, that the discussion tonight was a presentation about how the school district spent and will spend that one point zero nine sales tax. I had one point of um, uh, information correction on what a COP, that COP lease payment, payment is. When the uh initiative was passed in two thousand sixteen, uh, part of the transaction that occurred is that a bond, an outstanding bond that the uh school district had for, uh, I think it might have been that for the uh, for building Summit Elementary was retired and with uh, from the general fund from the school district. And in anticipation of paying back that amount of money to the general fund, the COP was approved, a COP, a certificate of participation. So that's what that is. And in, in every uh briefing following the passage of that initiative, uh, that was explained, and it was also explained and accepted generally by the council that uh, that COP repayment would be the first um priority for the school district at that time. I don't know that it is right now. It looks like salary is, and that's great. Um, but in our discussion of shall this tax continue going forward, we will be having that discussion in July. We did continue the ordinance that could possibly um get rid of that tax or modify it in some other manner. We'll have that discussion in July. And that'll give time for the community and the school district and the superintendent to help us all understand why it's important to maintain that tax or somehow modify or end that tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
One point of clarification to that.
Certainly.
As I showed on the fiscal year twenty-five, where we broke out a little more clearly, the COP lease payment is fully deducted first. It is the number one priority.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. We appreciate you. All right, we're gonna move on to item three D. Appointment to the Utility Advisory Committee. Suzanne.
As counsel is aware, we are continually advertising for volunteers for our boards and committees. We have, currently have some openings on our Utility Advisory Board Committee, and we have received an application from Richard Broyles. I, and I'm, I hope I'm saying that correct. I, I know I'll find out, but Richard Broyles, who would like to apply for the committee. So there are currently uh three openings on the UAC. There's an opening for a permanent position, and there's an opening for two alternate positions. So, and I believe Mr. Broyles, if he would raise his hand, there he is, is with us this evening to answer any questions counsel may have for him.
Thank you. Sir Broyles, would you mind coming to the podium? Would you just share with us a little bit of why you're interested and a little bit about yourself, if you don't mind?
Sure. First of all, she said my name correctly.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Most people can't, so.
It's the New York accent.
Yeah, I'm from Texas. No, last year I had a, a long discussion with Kip uh about the water, where it came from. And uh, it was very interesting that he took the time to do that. And he suggested that I take the uh, uh, Woodland Park Academy uh course. That was very good. Now, put in a plug, I hope that continues for the future, because it was a very good course. And so also I've been very interested in how our water's allocated, where it comes from. For an example, that uh, we, we have in Colorado, as you know, we have a priority in junior water rights. And our uh, we're part, really part of, since the city is divided between the Arkansas and the South Platte. And those two districts in Colorado, the water's over allocated. So I'm very interested in how our future looks here in Woodland Park. For an example, we get water from Twin Lakes, Twin Lakes, and we have multiple wells, mostly over at the uh uh golf course area, and our wells are not on an aqua for their own uh, uh cracked rock. So uh, I'm very interested in learning more about the system, doing more research and trying to be helpful to the, uh, to the board.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions?
I had, yes, I have two quick ones, I hope. Um, how long have you lived here?
Uh, twenty-two years.
Okay, and what kind of electrical engineer were you?
How do you know I was electrical engineer?
Cause you put manager electrical engineer.
Oh.
And, and the reason, the reason I'm asking is somewhat personal because I'm in electrical engineering as well, so I was just curious.
Okay, I, I started out working in nineteen eighty, worked for uh Lockheed Martin Maretta, which became Lockheed Martin. Now did design, develop and analysis on electrical systems like the, the space, the CCMS, which is Command, Control and Monitor Systems for the Space Shuttle. I worked with uh the Titan Four, Athena, and Atlas Program.
Counsel, anything else? All right. I'm looking for a motion. Um, I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Broyles to the um Utility Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Suzanne?
Thank you. Nikai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Mayor, with your permission, may I administer the oath of office to Mr. Broyles? I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me, sir. I, Richard Broyles.
I, Richard Broyles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
The Charter and ordinances.
Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Oh.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
As a member of the utility.
As a member of utility.
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll have you sign this right here. Just have you sign this. Right here, and then Kip will be in touch with you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, counsel, we're on number four additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda. We do have a correction to the agenda, first time in a long time. Um, at the top of the agenda, it's, it states that immediately following the regularly scheduled city council meeting, the city council will hold a work session on Bob's Rules of Order. That has been delayed to another time, so we will not be having a work session after the meeting. And with that, we're on to item five, the consent calendar. Item A is to consider, well, we have three items on the consent calendar. We can take them all together. Uh, we do have an ordinance on initial posting with regards to uh historic landmark designation for the log cabin, the preschool in the pines it used to be. It has been purchased to be a private residence, and so they're asking for that designation to be removed. And this is first reading for that. It is quasi judicial, so we would ask that, that any public uh comment or anything else be at the public hearing, which would be on June sixth. So the other item is the statement of expenditures for April and the minutes from the May second meeting. Can we take them all together?
Absolutely.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to uh take all items on the consent calendar together.
For approval?
For approval, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else you'd like to say, counsel? All right, Suzanne?
Thank you. Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Uh, item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Suzanne, do we have folks signed up?
Yes, ma'am. The first public comment that we have is an online signup, and it's Gerald Lee Gonzalez.
Thank you.
And so Gerald Lee, we will just promote you. I see you on Zoom and Eric's gonna take care of you so you could speak.
I see Erin.
Hi, Erin. There's Gerald Lee. Gerald Lee, you can unmute and please begin speaking.
Hi, my name's Gerald Lee Gonzalez. I live in Woodland Park. Thank you, Mayor Case and City Council, for the opportunity to comment on the retail tax initiative. I supported the retail tax initiative in two thousand sixteen. I trusted our school district to use the three point two to three point four million dollars a year to bring innovative programs, teacher salaries and infrastructure upkeep. The previous district CFO presented detailed yearly reports to city council. There were no red flags. Um, I emailed you all the January twenty twenty-fourth Woodland Park video of our school board meeting to extend Mr. I emailed you all the January twenty twenty-fourth Woodland Park video of our school board meeting to extend Mr. Witt's contract. It was obvious the contract had not been read through and that the majority of our school board did not care. The only people who knew what was written into Mr. Witt's contract were Mr. Witt and the school district attorney. Mr. Witt received a salary increase from a hundred and fifty-five thousand a year to a hundred and seventy thousand a year, still receives a five hundred dollar month monthly travel expenses for three days a week to work. Mr. Witt is now eligible for a fifteen percent bonus. The majority of our school board have been resisting for the last two to three months to set a meeting to establish metrics or for porn, perform an evaluation for Mr. Witt. What will we, what will determine the fifteen percent bonus payout? I included the quora for Mr. Witt's evaluation that his original contract required no metrics or evaluation was performed. A current Woodland Park School District Director misled the public and other directors that one had been conducted. That same director claimed it wasn't necessary to read or discuss the new contract because she had read the first contract. The video and quora exposed one of the instances of how irresponsible the majority of Woodland Park School District Board are with our tax dollars. I did not vote in twenty sixteen for three point two to three point four million dollars to be spent on a part-time superintendent, for law firms, multiple lawsuits, and lucrative contracts being awarded to a small group of people with obvious conflicts of interest. With the closing of Gateway, consolidation of the middle school, high school, fewer teacher salaries and benefits, the budget stabilization factor being eliminated, per pupil funding increasing to eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, thirty-three cents. And the district reserves account, the school district should be able to work with a budget. I've heard a lot about local control and entitlement over the last two and a half years. Local control should not be interpreted as free money with no accountability. And taxpayers are entitled to know exactly how their money is being protected and spent. And it was really interesting to me to hear tonight that the kids will be hurt when this board has decimated our sped program who are our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald Lee. Appreciate you. Suzanne? The next speaker is Carol Greenstreet. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Carol Greenstreet, Woodland Park. Community involves elated moments of celebration together. Symphony above the clouds, Christmas parade, sunny afternoons at Memorial, high school graduations. But vital moments must also include grieving, shaking our heads or weeping communally over what should not be. Five of our Woodland Park schools, three years losses have been sweeping. Loss of many of our school's finest, most dedicated, creative and compassionate teachers and administrators, a devastating thirty-six percent in one year, with more leaving at the end of this year. Of exiting disillusioned students, of sixth graders diving into middle school, of a prized building full of memories for middle school, and of a historic elementary school. Hence, crowding and lack of preschool capacity in the remaining three buildings, of mental health services for some of the least of these. Teachers now know a loss of support for struggling students due to staff reduction, of professional recognition with little to no curriculum collaboration, of respect through revelation of job status via email, of experienced colleagues requiring increased workloads. Parents now know well the loss of voice, of the confidence to keep their kids in the district that is in their community. Five hundred and fifty-four chose a different district or homeschool this year rather than the previous eight-year average of four hundred and ten per year. Of staffing stability, especially for students with special needs, of trust that the Board of Education cares about concerns or even knows what's going on in the schools. So many kids, despite the diligence of current staff, grieve lost support as fewer staff address educational needs, loss of their favorite teachers, a belief in their government, of friends and family to other districts. As a larger community, we digest the loss of funding and opportunities for families, of transparency, of decreased percent of budget spent on teaching staff while increasing amount spent on administration. Proposed budget for the coming year is decreased by four point eight percent due to a decline in enrollment. The nitty gritty includes decreased percentage of spending in instructional areas with increased percentage in administration. Last year, one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars was spent on legal fees compared to sixteen thousand in the twenty twenty-one school year. Affecting our larger community is the loss of friends and valuable community members. We have gained a school district appearing completely controlled by a superintendent and lawyer with absolutely no connection to our community and nothing to lose. Their policies rubber stamped by elected officials. Despite the fact that only fifty percent of the community supported these elected officials, they have made no effort to bridge the gap and unify the community. We must grieve with those who grieve.
Thank you, Carol. Suzanne Patterson? Welcome, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Case, members of the city council. I would like to share some good news about what I've seen and hopefully, you know, I ask, hopefully, members of this council were there to celebrate as well. I don't know. I apologize if you were there and they didn't see you. But if you were not there, you missed a good celebration on Monday. Well, at our last school board meeting, we celebrated thirty graduates, twenty twenty-four graduates that have been awarded four point one million dollars worth of scholarships. That took effort from the students. They had to apply. They had to write letters. They had to be interviewed. Staff assisted them. We're really proud of this accomplishment. And here, if anyone wants to go on our website, here are the thirty students that we celebrated with at our last school board meeting. So that is good news from this despicable member of the school board. On Tuesday, I attended the middle school band concert, the sixth graders at the middle school. Now, this, well, this was a collaboration of three schools coming together because as we, we've been told many times today, the sixth graders are at, at the elementary level. But it took collaboration from all three of the schools and the middle school to bring this fantastic concert to us. And I also want to address the Woodland Park. On Monday night, the high school, we had academics and athletics and activities awards night. I am so proud of our staff and our accomplishments from our high schoolers. The number of achievements and awards that these high school students got is, I will go ab- ab- above my time here. I don't have the time to celebrate the good things that are going on in our school. And I invite, you know, all you city council members, you, we stand up here and we converse and we come to your meetings. Come, come to the, some of the celebrations that are in our school. And, and Councilman Gear, I know exactly the, um, the assignment that you're talking about, and I do believe it went back and it was referencing that in America, only two point five percent of the slave trade got transported to America at that time. And during the Roman Empire, slavery was, was adamant. And America did not invent the slave trade. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Suzanne, do we have anyone else?
Yes.
Randy Clegg?
I'm hoping.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Please. Randy, did I say that correctly, sir?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Mayor Case, may I approach?
I'll take that.
Suzanne, I'll take him for you and help you out.
I don't know how it works.
Thank you for asking.
What is, oh, it's information from Dr. Joseph McCall.
Okay.
Hold it, I have each, for each one of the city council members. One, two. Well, okay, I got it right there. All right, yeah, that's all of it right there. I'm sorry, some of the printing is kind of messed up, but I did my best. I think you can get the gist of everything that is said in there. Important.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, could you please restate your name and municipality for me? Thanks.
Okay. My name is Randy Clegg. I'm a resident of Woodland Park. I've resided here for just about twenty-eight years. Prior to that, I lived in Germany, worked on the German economy for ten years. I was in the military. And the reason why I bring that up, I was in the first second A C R stationed in Germany, patrolling during the Cold War in seventy-three, seventy-seven. And we patrolled the Czechoslovakian border. We had observation posts that we had to set up and monitor a, a border crossing. And we had radar that we had to set up. We had remote radar. And the second lieutenant, when I was there, it was my first time there, and he warned me, do not get in front of that radar. It can cause infertility and other damages. You don't want to do that. Radiation is dangerous. At least I appreciate him giving me the heads up that something like that was dangerous. But it seems like today in our society, nobody is even warning us at all concerning the dangers of five G. And we have a group of people together that somebody's are gonna have to do it. If you guys aren't gonna do it, which I put you in between a rock and a hard place, I can understand that because then that would put you in a position where you have to admit that it is a danger. And so we'll probably be printing out flyers and everything because the residents of Woodland Park has the right to know of the dangers of that tower back there. And it is very dangerous. And I've done my research, many doctors and scientists. And, um, and, um, let's see, that is a military-grade weapon, whether you want to believe me or not, the military has used this material ever since World War Two. People you might remember got sick in Cuba, they use this type of weaponry to make those people sick. And use a microwave radiation, you pretty much create any kind of illness that you want. And, um, it's no different than playing Russian roulette. Sooner or later, that round's gonna match up with the chamber and someone's gonna get injured. Either or die. And these are some of the side effects that it can cause, which I have a couple of these. Tinnitus, uh, hypertension, headaches, brain fog, uh, reduction in melatonin, memory loss, infertility, Alzheimer's, pain, uh, back pain, Parkinson's and cancer. And, uh, and I would, you have that tower right there next to the senior center, which some people could have pacemakers or other devices implanted them where that radiation could affect it and harm them severely. Maybe even death, who knows? And we know that for a fact. A lot of these five G, uh, towers are around schools, which I know you plan on moving over there by Aquatic Center, and I think this is just a crime against humanity. Because there's kids over there and there's already kids that have had brain tumors and other types of tumors with this technology around the schools. And I am a humanitarian. I believe in human life and, and in safety, all life, because it affects everything, not only just the kids, but it affects the bees, the birds, the animals, the vegetation, everything. It destroys everything. And there's over two, four hundred doctors and scientists that are, uh, have a coalition together that are out there right now fighting this worldwide, trying to get this done away with, get rid of it because it's hurting people and making people sick and killing people.
Mr. Clay, your time is up. If you could please wind up, please. Thank you.
Okay, well, I was, I was just looking at this contract and I just want to finish this up. The how dangerous this is, and also the doctors have declared this a type one carcinogen. And here you have, I know that you're receiving nine thousand dollars in payment from Verizon. And I don't know how in the world you can put a price on anybody's head, you know, just taking money from them. And also a proof that it is a danger to everybody. Why would Verizon have a one million dollar liability, you know, for themselves for injury? I mean, that pretty much states right there that they're admitting that it is a danger. And that's the point I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian Paul. Would you please give us your name and your town of residence?
Yes, Brian Paul, Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor and council. I have seen no evidence contrary to the fact that the F C C or Verizon is forcing this five G tower on us as a community. In the Colorado revised statutes, in one of the definitions defining mayor is executive officer de facto or de jour mayor. There's a line item for, um, the governor for many of the city council. It's all de facto or de jour. What is that? De facto is of fact. Yes, there's a, there's a municipality known as the city of Woodland Park. It's a municipal corporation. It's fact. It's a legal fiction. It's, it's, it's a fact. Okay, what's de jour? De jour is of right. And you get that right from your intent through the oath of office to support three constitutions. The United States Constitution, Constitution of Colorado and the, the city count, the city charter. Right there in the city charter and the nor noise ordinance, it's rather strict about that. You know, the, and I guess we need to define what noise is. But you know, noise has to be suppressed. Definitely something that's going on twenty-four seven that we can't hear. But I know the language in the state of Colorado is English, not legalese. It's English. So Merriam-Webster defines noise, it includes electromechanic, or yes, electromagnetic radiation, microwaves. Radio signals, we can't hear. We needed a device called a radio to pick it up. Sound, we can hear. It's a small range of sound for our ears. The noise, which the board can, or the council can stand on, I was like, okay, all noise isn't in our ear range. It's outside of our range. So we need equipment to pick it up. With that equipment, we would see that, that those towers are screeching at us twenty-four seven. Whether we hear them or not, they're going on. We're here to empower the city council to use whichever hat appropriate. The, the de facto hat or the de jour hat. And no corporation like Verizon or the F C C come in and force you all to breach your oath of office to be bind, bound to install this equipment when they haven't disclosed all the possible infractions that it may have with the city ordinance of the noise. So I'm available to think tank this more at some time or to, yeah, but we're here to empower you guys to, to use your de jour hat and say, no, I'm not going to breach my oath of office. And you have to prove that it's safe for man, especially our children.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kitty Walker. Welcome, Kitty.
Thank you. Okay, so kitten Walker, Woodland Park. I have a lot to say. I'm gonna start by saying that Tuesday night at the Republican G O P meeting, our mayor was asked if she had any comments. And she said, no, she had nothing to share about our city. Apparently, she doesn't feel like the workshop was important enough to announce, or maybe she just didn't want anyone to come. I've heard from several of you that our school board does not listen to the community, but you, in fact, have not listened to the community. The community did not choose Carol Harvey to sit in that seat. Actually, Carol Harvey did not run to sit in that seat. She knew ahead of time that if the seat was vacated, her friends would appoint her. On November ninth, at the workshop, Carol Harvey blurted out. On November ninth, at the workshop, Carol Harvey blurted out, I will not pander to the citizens. There were people that did not want Carol Harvey in that seat, and you did not listen to us. Good slavery. My ancestor, George Darling, came to this country as an indentured servant. Yes, a white man was an indentured servant. An indentured servant comes and works for seven years with no pay. Would that be a slave? At the end of seven years, he was allocated property and opened his own pub. He was set to be a free man and have free enterprise. Good slavery. You have hypocritically asked these people that applied for that seat that Ms. Harvey once as a toddlerish behavior, walked out because she didn't get her own way and didn't want to submit to authority. The way that you conducted the interview was so invalid, asking different questions to each applicant. That was so invalid. That invalidated the whole interview. And going back to the hypocritical behavior tonight, some of the questions were, how will you build a bridge to the division in the community? I saw no behavior here tonight or attempt to build a bridge. I saw just poor behavior, basically. This council is embarrassing.
Thank you, Kitty. Your time is up. I appreciate you.
Well, I'm going to end with the prayer as I always do. So Father, I just thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, to speak the truth. Your word says that you shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free. And tonight, there has some been set free in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And we have Rusty Neal on Zoom. Rusty, stand by, and Eric will promote you so you can speak. Okay, Rusty, just unmute, and you're ready to go.
I'm ready.
Rusty?
Hi, Kelly, how are you?
I'm good. Thank you. It's good to hear from you.
Okay, that confirms that you can hear me. I wanted to make this really brief. I had one thing initially, but it's evolved into maybe two other comments. The, the one thing I did want to come and talk to was the line item that the school board did present where it had innovation and other combined together. I think a better practice, and this is just a recommendation that could be passed back to the board, is that you should separate innovation from other, because other, and we have it in different governmental agencies. It's like a slush fund. But I think the amount that is spent on innovation be, should be separated from the other. So we, so the citizen can see how large the slush fund or the other is in the budget. So i- if we could just go back and ask about that one thing, but I thank the board for the, the information they did present. Now I'm going to switch over to some added topics. I want to thank Jeff Greer, Councilman Greer, for your example of what the American birthright is. I, as a citizen, I have tried to figure out what it is. I've heard a lot of negative things. So when you gave the example of the homework assignment to give a good example of slavery, I, I thought that was very educational to me because it gave me a concrete example. But when I just heard the previous speaker, Ms. Walker, equate indentured servitude to slavery, I think she should go back to the definition of indentured servitude and how vastly different it is for slavery, because I still am looking for a good example of slavery. Slavery is never ending. And indentured servitude by definition is to repay a loan or a debt. So indentured servitude historically is, has been going on since the colonies. And I have nothing bad to say about indentured servitude because it gives somebody the opportunity to pay off a loan and then make good in the world. But slavery, I'd still like to hear somebody give a good example of slavery. And thank you, Jeff, for giving that example. I think that was a horrible thing as an assignment. Lastly, I, I was a little surprised that the first line that the school board gives is how the students and faculty will suffer. I would hope that they could get a talking point that would go over with the citizens a little better, like, well, we'll go back and look at other options if we lose the one point zero nine percent. Other options, we could look at contracts and salaries that are given to administration. We don't automatically go to the faculty. It just bodes poorly. Legal expense.
Rusty, if you could please finish up.
Okay, I did not have the three-minute clock on my screen. I, I will cut at this point in time. Thank you very much for considering my comments, and I hope this can be passed back to the board, school board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Keys. That concludes public comment for this evening. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none? Thank you. We're on to item seven, unfinished business, and we have none. Item eight, ordinances on initial posting, we have none, and takes us to nine public hearings. Item A is Pines at Tamarack PUD and Preliminary Platte Amendment requested by Dave Garrettson, the applicant, and Pines at Tamarack LLC, the property owner, to amend the previously approved Pines at Tamarack like PUD. And this is quasi judicial counsel, so we need to be careful to keep on topic, and our presenter is CJ.
Before you go, yeah, sorry, before you go, CJ. I'm, I don't personally think I have a conflict, but I do know the architect for this project. I've known him and his wife for twenty years. So if you all think I should recuse myself, please let me know.
Do you think that you would not have the ability to be impartial?
No, I will be. I have no problem being impartial.
Counsel, you all right with that? Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to announce that I've sat on planning when this came through Planning Commission, but it never resolved. The, uh, so we didn't get a chance to vote, and I've talked to Jeff about it. Um, so as long as I let you guys know, that's, I didn't get to resolution with where, what CJ is going to present. So I don't even know what the outcome is. But I'm planning, if you guys are okay with that, I would stay.
Do you think you can remain impartial?
Yep.
Thank you. Counsel, you all right with that? All right, let's go forward. Thank you, CJ.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Again, this is a request to amend the previously approved Pines at Tamarack Plan Unit Development Master Plan and Preliminary Platte to increase the number of residential units from twenty-six to a total of thirty-nine on the twenty point six one acre lot. The subject property, uh, stated is twenty point six one acres and is located in the northern portion of Woodland Park on the east side of Highway sixty-seven and to the northwest of the Reserve at Tamarack subdivision. The subject property is north of the intersection of Highway sixty-seven and Fairfield Lane, which is bordered by Highway sixty-seven on its west and Sourdough Road on its east side. Shining Mountain Golf Course is located across Highway sixty-seven to the west. As seen here from the zoning map, uh, the subject property is owned planned unit development. This property was originally a part of a larger parcel known as Hawk Ridge, which spanned on both sides of Highway sixty-seven, which was annexed in nineteen ninety-two. In nineteen ninety-nine, the northern, I'm sorry, in nineteen ninety-nine, the Northern Triangle, which is now Lot One, was rezoned from PUD to suburban residential. In the year two thousand, the Day Spring Christian Fellowship subdivision was approved, which consisted of the subject property and the northern Lot One. In two thousand and two, the construction began on the Impact Church on Lot One, and the subject property Lot Two has remained undeveloped. In two thousand and nineteen, the Pines at Tamarack Plan Unit Development Final Master Plan and Preliminary Platte, which you can see here on the slide, uh, was approved by city council. The master plan consisted of a total of twenty-six single-family lots. The applicant has gained extensions of the approved preliminary plat and PUD in two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-three. And just a reminder for everyone, by city code, preliminary plats can only be extended one year at a time, while PUD master plans can be extended two years at a time. So this is the reason that the master plan expires in twenty-five, and the preliminary plat expires in twenty-four. And we just have some site photos here for you all. So the top photo was taken from the intersection of Fairfield Lane and Sourdough Road, looking north. And the bottom photo was taken from Sourdough Road, looking west into the site. The top photo here was taken south of Fairfield Lane and Highway sixty-seven, looking north and east. And lastly, the bottom photo was taken from the northwest corner of the lot, looking south and east. Here on this slide, we wanted to show you a side-by-side comparison of what has been previously approved uh, from the master plan on the left. And on the right-hand side is the proposed master plan. As you can see here, the overall layout of the, of the development is the same as far as the general lot configuration and two access points off of Sourdough Road. On the right-hand side, you will see the proposal consists of two different construction phases. The applicant has expressed their intention is to build out phase one first and have construction done as soon as possible, and the goal for phase two is to finish construction by twenty twenty-six. Another difference with the approved and proposed master plans is to increase the density from twenty-six dwelling units to a total of thirty-nine dwelling units and decrease the individual lot sizes. Currently, the approved PUD master plan and preliminary plat for the Pines at Stone Ridge consists, I'm sorry, the Pines at Tamarack, consists of a total of twenty point six acres. The proposal at hand includes an increase of open space. Here on the screen is an outline of how the five-point acres of open space is achieved with a total of three tracks. The table here on this slide is another representation of what is currently approved versus what is being proposed. Highlighted, highlighted in yellow are the proposed changes, which include the number of units from twenty-six to thirty-nine. The gross density, uh, from the approved one point two six dwelling units an acre to a total of one point eight nine units per acre. And lastly, the minimum lot size from sixteen thousand square feet to seventy-eight hundred square feet. On the bottom of this table is a total acreage of each of the master plan, which includes the housing portion, open space, and streets. All three of these are proposed to be changed as well. Pursuant to the traffic study recommendation, the applicant proposes to install a three hundred and twenty-foot-long plus a one hundred and eighty-foot taper, northbound right turn lane, turn lane, deceleration lane on Highway sixty-seven, which is outlined in blue here on the slide. Sourdough Road is outlined in yellow on this slide, and it butts the eastern property line of the subject property. In order to meet the city requirements, the applicant must repair and update Sourdough Road for the full length along the eastern boundary of the subject property. This is a snapshot of the future land use map, uh, within the current approved master plan. With the original Pines at Tamarack master plan was reviewed for the future land use map at the time, labeled this parcel as residential. Within the current twenty thirty plan, the future land use map has identified this area for mixed use. Neither plan makes recommendations of density for residential uses. This request is to amend the, to amend, uh, the density or add residential lots and not to change the specific use of the property. Staff analyzed section eighteen point three zero of the city code, which requires, uh, which is requirements for PUD zone districts. Staff found that the application substantially complies with the sections listed here on the screen, and a full analysis was included within the staff report. And lastly, on the PUD amendment analysis was dimensional standards. All development standards are included within the proposal of final development master plan. The table here on this slide compares the current proposed amendment to the previous approved final development plan as well as the more typical suburban residential zone district standards. We are looking at the suburban residential zone, zone district standards within the code, uh, because it, within the code, it must be in harmony with the surrounding area. As you remember from the aerial photo in the beginning of the presentation, just to the east of the subject property is the Reserve at Tamarack subdivision, which is owned suburban residential. The two, two standards that I wanted to point out on this table is the minimum lot area and the open space requirements. Within the SR zone, the minimum lot area is a total of fifteen thousand square feet, which is quite larger than the proposed seventy-eight hundred square feet. In lieu of larger residential lots, the applicant is proposing, uh, smaller residential lots for a greater acreage of open space on the site. Staff also reviewed section seventeen, which, uh, provides requirements for preliminary plats. And again, the application complies with the standards on the screen. And lastly, found within the preliminary plat section of the code, it outlines design standards. Staff found that the application substantially complies with these sections listed here on the screen. And again, a full analysis was listed within your staff report. Staff referred the application to the agencies listed here on this slide, and staff did not receive any written public comments. The Planning Commission, excuse me, the Woodland Park Planning Commission heard this item on March twenty-eighth. And after consideration of the item, the Planning Commission voted to continue the public hearing to April twenty-fifth with the request that the applicant provide additional information. At the conclusion of the public hearing on April twenty-fifth, the Planning Commission recommended that city council approve this PUD amendment and preliminary plat for thirty-nine single-family residential lots on twenty point six one acres and Lot Two, Day Spring Christian Fellowship. And also that the Planning Commission recommended that city council approve the dimensional standards as shown in PUD twenty twenty-four dash oh three in the PUD Final Development Plan for thirty-nine single-family lots on twenty point six one acres on Lot Two, Day Spring Christian Fellowship in the PUD Zone. Provided that based on the findings in the staff report and presented at public hearing approval of the request by David Garrettson and the Pines at Tamarack LLC for subdivision twenty twenty-four dash oh three preliminary plat for thirty-nine single-family residential lots on twenty point six one acres and Lot Two, Day Spring Christian Fellowship, subject to the following conditions. Condition number one, prior to the installation of infrastructure, the applicant shall obtain a zoning development permit for infrastructure, uh, which shall include final utility plan, final grading and erosion control plan, final on and off-street plan with profiles, um, approved C dot access permit and approved swamp plan. Applicant must resubmit the preliminary plat addressing all comments within the city redline comment packet for approval. Number three, the applicant must adhere to all C dot requirements and gain necessary permits and approvals with C dot. For prior to convenient conveyance of any proposed law, the applicant shall record a final plat, complete the infrastructure of all required improvements, or enter into a subdivision development agreement uh, fully secure with an acceptable guarantee. All costs associated with construction of the required improvements shall be borne by the developer. Repair and update Sourdough Road to city standards for the full length along the eastern boundary of Lot Two, or enter into a subdivision development agreement. Comply with C dot requirements regarding the deceleration lane on Highway sixty-seven, establish access to the Centennial Trail. And change the wording on page one of the eleven-page PUD amendment note number eight F to reduce the allowed projection into a side yard, uh, from a maximum of three feet to a maximum of two feet to the required setback. Lastly, number five, prior to recording the final plat, the applicant shall submit, uh, covenant satisfactory to the city and park development fees in the applicable amount. And lastly, here, staff's recommendation is to approve resolution number, uh, nine two two, series two thousand and twenty-four, which is a resolution approving an amendment to the Pines at Tamarack Plan Unit Development Master Plan and a preliminary plat amendment to increase the number of residential lots from twenty-six to thirty-nine on twenty point six one acres. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We also have, uh, Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We also have uh Jim Hoyk in the audience tonight. If you guys have any questions, and I think the owner, David Garrettson, is online.
Thank you. Um, Council, do you have any questions for staff?
I do. I have a couple. So, sorry CJ. I didn't, if you could go back on the slides, you had a slide of the open space.
Sure.
I didn't, that wasn't, I didn't see it in the packet. If it's there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that was um a new, um this actually came from the applicant and I. I have the applicant's presentation. He has the same thing in his presentation, so um he'll be able to talk about it a little bit more, but this. Um, this was given to the planning commission at their last hearing, so.
Okay, so I saw my my quick question and you can answer it or Jim can answer it, but um the the little green thing that's kind of dividing the. Um, housing tracks, what is that? Is that a trail or?
So this is a twenty foot uh drainage and utility easement.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's all, and that actually.
And on this too, I I I would like to point out that um so the light green areas in here, the streets. Um those are excluded from the open space calculations because we do have.
That was my next question.
We have a provision in our codes under the P U D zone district. That um the open space calculations cannot contain easements and streets, so um that's why those are excluded here.
Okay, and then do, do you have a slide of what the original open space looked like when they did the twenty one?
Um, the original as far as this specific or what's approved already?
What was approved for the, I mean, what had the twenty, yeah, what we approved last year that had the open space? I just.
So just the amount here, so in two thousand or two thousand nineteen excluding all the easements. Uh it was a total of one point six acres and eight percent of the site.
Okay.
But unfortunately, sorry, I don't have a.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. And that's all I had.
Counsel, anyone else have questions for the staff?
And I know the applicant also has a presentation, so.
Please, if you would like to come to the podium. Of course, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, uh Council. Uh my name is Jim How come with Kimley Horn, uh landscape architect and planner in Colorado Springs. And I I. I understand the context of your city and uh because I live halfway between both of us or between city and and uh Colorado Springs and Woodland Park. So I enjoy the the landscape that we have there. Uh, thank you, staff uh uh for their effort. Um also want to thank our planning commission. We we took a lot of time last time to kind of go through and provide some additional information and and the collaboration there was was uh. Profitable and I think clarified a lot of things uh that we can cover tonight. Excellent. I want to just kind of go back a little bit. Um it's been two thousand nine since two thousand nineteen uh when the original was approved, just to kind of give context. Uh you know, and recognizing um you know, the values that the community talks about all the time and the idea that. Uh Woodland Park is nestled here in the Forest Service and it has this great recreational asset uh at its at its front door and back doors. And I think that's a piece of what is going into the plan today. Next slide. Um, a lot of this is going to be somewhat redundant and I'll try to hit on a few things that CJ did not. Uh or just elaborate on that a little bit so that, again, we don't bore you to death with redundancy. Again, just for context, as we zoom in a little bit more, just more context on the on the. Setting of the recreational amenities and the open space and kind of the character of the landscape in this area. Next slide. Uh as CJ mentioned, and and this kind of goes back again to two thousand nineteen um when the project came through the. The first time and begin to recognize kind of the pattern within the city and kind of the vision and the community values that were. That were there and that that was the intent originally to um model that and respect that and um. As we zoom in, go the next slide, I guess. Again, it kind of shows that blow up of that of that land use that was identified in the envisioning divisioning plan. And uh I'm getting a little. Also, um. Just want to again, continue to keep our eye on that on that. Portion of the land use plan and as we move into the next slide, which is a zoning, oops, I'm sorry. This is kind of begins to recognize the conversations that happened back in two thousand nineteen as well. Uh, in the visioning plan, um the mixed use did identify employment, uh retail, commercial uses. And it was that time the um the rec- the the community recognized more of a. An opportunity to define the use here with the zoning and the P U D and it did go to purely a residential um. Uh footprint and that's what we're moving forward with today. Next slide. Uh this again kind of reflects how the vision that came out of the twenty thirty plan is really captured in the zoning. And next slide. As we look at at the kind of a blow up of the northern western corner of the city, a lot of P U D has been applied. To the land uses in this area. And this is also a time when um the two two units per acre uh was identified in way of water allocations as well. So we wanted to continue to respect uh existing pattern and development. The vision coming out of the master plan, but also uh the water considerations. Next slide. Uh this is a blow up um of the site. Uh, this would um kind of lead us into a conversation that we had with um with the planning staff. And with us planning commission uh as we begin to look at this. Uh there is an increase in open space as identified and we'll talk a little bit more in detail about how that breaks down. Um, and then this also gives you a little breakdown of the the change in um the D use per acre. Next slide. Part of the conversation that that um. Came out of the the conversation with planning commission was about utilities. And in particularly, um one particular topic was stormwater. Uh there was concerns about how that was being managed. And how that would impact uh considerations associated with uh seat out right of way. Um, and also this this plan will give you a little picture of what is existing utility. So the the lighter yellow uh shades on the Highway sixty seven and the sourdough frontage represents. Uh the primarily sourdough has the overhead electric coming from the substation. Sour or uh the frontage along sixty seven has the water wastewater uh extension through there and also the water that reaches out to. Um, uh the church to the north. Um, there's also a, it's hard to see on this one, but it's also the trail running along Centennial or the Centennial. Centennial Trail running along the highway. The pink as as uh running down the center of the site, again, as mentioned. Uh just for clarification, that is a twenty foot U two um drainage easement that was identified with the original. Uh, plotting and zoning of this parcel. The blue obviously is our water and underneath that is the green and for wastewater system. Just go giving you a framework of what's there today and what's being proposed. Next slide. Uh this slide, we can go into a little bit more detail and this is where we focused a lot on how to calculate. Really, the question was, how do we calculate it open space? And the back in two thousand nineteen, the the formula was a little different, so we pulled that apart. Uh per planning commission's uh request, it really began to identify the individual pieces and then give you a side by side comparison. Uh there's two red boxes there over laying the spreadsheet. The one on the left is the twenty twenty four and the one on the right is the twenty nineteen. No change in the in the total all site. Uh I think we wa- wanted to point out is the dark green is which is reflected in the map. Also shows five point nine acres of open space versus the one point six that was originally approved with the. Um, the two thousand nineteen. P U D, that's an increase of twenty one percent. And we'll talk a little bit more about how the twenty nineteen is was captured. Um, and then also. Uh we wanted to look at, you know, the area of disturbance within the site, and I think that's where we wanted to pause for a moment and just talk a little bit about. The quality of the site. We'll show you some pictures here in a minute. I think there's it's a healthy stand of. Uh ponderosa's, it's been well maintained over the years. Uh so there's a lot of efforts been taken to mitigate some of the fire concerns, you know, in a normal healthy forest situation. And that's really the goal of this one is to create a. Maintain as much of that while creating a little enclave of some housing within the within inside that um. That lot. Um, as we uh before I like, yes, before I forget to uh the open space, the differences between. Two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty four. The lots were a little bit bigger uh in uh two thousand nineteen. But the open space accounted for a conservation easement, a preservation easement that was put on those lots as well, so. This really um, there was a kind of a a. Um, a push and pull on this new plan to accommodate more more of a permanent buffer open space. And take it off the private land and put it back into the kind of the common space for the the development. Um, but we still end up with a twenty one percent increase today. The next slide begins to, I I guess first, is any questions about this slide? Okay. Uh the next slide kind of gives us a little picture of what we're looking at and we wanted to illustrate. Uh and I think um planning commission appreciated the opportunity to kind of look at the site with us. Uh if you can see the little map up in the corner, the the little red circles are where the pictures were taken from. Again, kind of targeting the the backs of those lots and looking at what the open space uh quality and conditions were. And we're about a hundred and ninety feet setback from the highway at this point. Next slide. Um, another focus was what was this drainage and what did it look like? Uh, we have a little ugliness right next to sourdough where the pipe comes out of the, comes out from underneath the road. But the rest of that drainage, that twenty foot easement is identified. Um, as a pretty natural uh swale and transition down through this property. So it does create an opportunity for some passive trails. Next. This is looking east. Uh again, see the red dot there. Um we kind of did kind of a panoramic shot there. And you can kind of see the house twice there in the photograph. Um that again gives us about a hundred and ninety foot setback from the neighbors there. And maintaining the buffer and also it's a good picture to kind of get you the sunlight. And the kind of the the density and the kind of health and quality that that um that forest canopy there. Next slide. This is looking to the north who are county partners or neighbors, I should say. Uh again, we're about a hundred and eighty feet. From um the back of a lot to the nearest structure on the neighbor's property. Again, a pretty healthy and a nice stand of ponderosa pines. Next slide. And this was a kind of the conversation we ended with uh planning commission was really about what what the quality open space was and what we were trying to preserve and and. Provide with uh this development addition to the community. Um passive social trails are really the target. Uh this is not intended to be um a bike track or uh anything of that nature. More oriented towards the wildlife, wildflowers and then um the native grasses in this area. That was the objectives and we think we can continue to do that well to what the plan we have for. Next slide. This is just another section through that to give you another perspective of. Kind of the buffers and kind of the context of the the enclave of houses that we're looking to uh. Place within the site. Um, this particular section shows about a hundred and seventy foot buffer along um the highway. Side uh including the trail right up right up to the trail section. And then we have a hundred and forty on the sourdough side. And again, we're about fifty fifty, so it's about, I think I did the masses fifty four percent. Uh, kind of that piece in the center identified as the development zone. So the next slide. The next two slides are uh redundant from the previous approved plan. Uh, we we have the same intent to probably build on the character of the site, just add a little uh details. And and some theming from a landscape standpoint, but also just re-enhance the the open space. Whiles our opportunities with this property. The next slide. And this kind of goes back to maintaining the healthy forest that's there. Um my responsibility to do some. Continue to maintain some fire mitigation practices in place or keep that in place. Uh work with the H O A and um the owners, property owners to maintain a healthy forest there. And I think we, by preserving the open space, the way we have, we have uh the ability to kind of keep control of that as well. Next slide. Uh again, just kind of give you us a. Uh, a little more character to the the idea of what the improvements on sourdough looks like. Uh, there's the existing curb pavement that will continue up to the north uh to the edge of the. The north edge of the property and at the county line. The next slide. Again, just some of those images uh of the site and there was a lot of conversation early on about the corridor and the character along sixty seven. Next slide. Again, the relationship to the trail. Next slide. Um, and the other conversation we had is about beginning to illustrate a connection between. Uh, the new units and Centennial Trail. Next slide. And as mentioned, uh we've we've gotten the the comments back from C dot and we continue to work with them. To develop um the strategy to move forward and we're in all agreement with uh what's being proposed there. The D cell lane that would come along here and make that uh. Right hand turned a little safer into the overall development area. Next slide. And this is no change from the original amendment. Uh, as T CJ had mentioned too. We we have been looking at a phasing. Uh, we believe with phase one, all the utility infrastructure for phase one as well as the loop. Requirements for water and the extension for wastewater would be completed with phase one. As well as the little orange section down there uh for the C dot extension and D cell lane. Would all be playing planned as part of that. Um those improvements. Next slide. Uh, we just wanted to kind of reiterate again, kind of the the intent and character. Um, we're being respectful for um. The the image and the and the desire for the community to um present itself well. We have architecture and the again, these are just examples of the materials and forms and scale that we're looking to provide. With the development. Um and we would finalize all those as we move into final plot. Next slide. Um, another discussion that happened uh was about, you know, what does a seventy eight hundred square foot lot look like? Uh so we provided some examples. Um, this included. Um, the the graphic showing the property line there, which is about fifteen feet off the curb line. Um, because there's easements and stuff along the road. And then um this footprint maximizes kind of almost really the 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 square foot building envelope that's being preserved with the setbacks. Uh, this is roughly a two thousand twenty one hundred square foot footprint. Uh, so a twenty two thousand square foot house for a three thousand square foot house would easily uh fit on these lots. Uh but but you can see the setbacks in the relationship to the open space at the rear. Next slide. Uh, just to clarify and confirm, uh we we are uh. Accepting that the the change in the maximum setback in the projection area um. For the buildings on the houses, so the overhangs will be limited to two foot. Next slide. The conditions of approval, we we have gone over a number of times, both planning planning. Commission and with staff and we are in a climate with what's been requested. Um, and I with that, I would uh be willing to take any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions for the applicant?
I do, yeah. Um, hi, thank you. Uh actually, I appreciated the second presentation as well as CJ, so. Uh, it was very good. Um, so we we've heard because you were increasing the density in that in that property. Um, I know there were some concerns, I think, from citizens that talked about um the traffic leaving that property. And going on the Highway sixty seven, in particular, I think left turn uh left turning on sixty seven. Was there any discussion with C dot on that?
Uh, they've they've kind of re-reviewed the traffic study and felt that the the conditions that were presented. Matt meet and will be uh maintained by the current conditions out there. So there was no additional request for turn lanes or anything like that, if that's you're asking, but.
Yeah, I was concerned more about light, you know, is there going to be eventually going to be a light there or were they going to be concerned about putting the light there just for the left turn?
I I I would not think so. They're they're right now, based on the this traffic study, they're. I, I, I would not think so. They're, they're right now, based on the, this traffic state, there's not a warranted. Condition there. Uh, obviously if something changes across the road, that might change the, the condition. Sure. There's some town patio homes. Potentially planned over there, but or at the golf course does something crazy and big. So.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, my other question, if I can still have the floor, um, Kip, I, I believe Lee had. Um, I think he had questions about this early on about the, the water, right? Didn't he CJ? Yeah.
Some big questions on the, the looping of the water system and how that's going to work. So, uh, Kip and I met with the applicants. Professional talk about the bottom.
Yeah, the applicants will aware of the looping requirements and how they're going to meet those.
Okay, they are. Okay. So that's the, that's what's coming through in phase two. The, the, that's the loop or no?
No, so the, 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 all the water, um, and wastewater infrastructure would be constructed in phase one.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's a couple of routes that, um, Kip kind of explained to them on how to best go about the water looping. So. Um, you know, we obviously haven't received any construction documents yet, so we don't know the, that exact route.
Right.
Um, they're planning to take, which I think that'll be.
But the intent is phase one.
Correct. Yeah, prior to any construction of homes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we confirm with that condition.
And then, um, just. Cause I think I heard it for the first time. Um, you said the size of the homes is anywhere from two to three thousand square foot.
I was just saying that example that we illustrated there kind of showed the building envelope and what could fit in there.
Yeah.
For example, that this helped Igo's planning commission on the second go around better understand what was possible there.
Okay.
Any other counsel questions? The applicant? Right? Thank you. We did actually open the public hearing when we started the item, but I would like to now. Open the, the public hearing portion with for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to address the council.
I have no one signed up and no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Then I will close the public hearing. And look to counsel for deliberation, questions of staff. And, um, eventually get to a motion. And if there is no more deliberation, I would just be looking for a motion.
Okay, then. No one has anything? I'll make a motion to approve the pines at Tamarack P U D and preliminary plat amendment as written with the, um, conditions. Um, from planning.
My second.
All right, anything else? Suzanne? Thank you. Gear?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go on to item nine B, approval of ordinance fourteen seventy three. Series twenty twenty four and ordinance of the city council of Woodland Park, Colorado, adjusting expenditure appropriations to the various funds. For the twenty twenty four budget. Aaron?
Good evening, council. And welcome council member Harvey. Look forward to working with you again. Let me pull this up here. All right, so I have ordinance fourteen seventy three, series two thousand twenty four to amend two thousand twenty four budget expenditure appropriations. Uh, this is the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the DDA to Netco. So at the DDA meeting on March fifth and then subsequently at the DDA meeting. On March, um, seventh, the DDA did unanimously approve for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to Netco. For the exclusive use of purchasing a new fire engine to replace the department's current aging engine. Um, the DDA wishes to disperse these funds to Netco and to let them hold them until the time that they actually purchased their new fire engine. And then I do have here just, um, a breakdown of the DDA's. Fund balance so that you can see that they do have adequate funding available to make this transfer. So. Um, their revenue over expenditure projection for this year was four hundred and fifty two thousand. They had a beginning fund balance on January first of eight hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and fifty eight dollars. Which gave them an initial, um, ending fund balance projection of one million, three hundred and forty two thousand dollars. So now with the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant transfer, they would have a remaining fund balance of one million, one hundred and ninety two thousand. Eight hundred and twenty eight dollars. Uh, are there any questions on this one?
Aaron, I have a question. Um. Please confirm for me that, that one million dollars, we have removed the value of the land that the, um. Tava group purchased from the books. Yes?
That is correct. So previously, the land was held on our books at a value of one hundred. Uh, I'm sorry, one million, one hundred and sixty thousand and last year it was sold to the Tava group at eight hundred thousand. So those, those book transfers have been completed.
So that is actually cash reserves.
Correct.
Thank you. Counsel. Questions?
Uh, no, I just would. Thank Aaron, he just took away my counsel report from DDA, so.
Sorry about that.
It won't happen like that all the time. All right. Counsel, I'd look for a motion, please.
I make a motion to.
Thank you. Hold everything.
Holding.
I need to open a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the council with regards to this item.
I have no one signed up, ma'am.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
All right, I make a motion for the approval of ordinance number fourteen seventy three, series twenty twenty four as written. I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Suzanne, do I need to read it into the record now or after?
Uh, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna ask the city manager to read it into the record. It is placed on the dice view. It was not in the packet. But it was noticed and published. He's gonna read it into the record.
Thank you, Aaron. Go ahead.
All right. Okay, we have ordinance number fourteen seventy three, series two thousand twenty four. And ordinance adjusting expenditure appropriations to the various funds in the totals and amounts for the purpose as set forth below. For the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the two thousand twenty four budget year and amending ordinance number fourteen sixty six, series two thousand twenty three. Whereas the home rule charter of the city of Woodland Park specifies that city council may by ordinance make supplemental appropriations when they're available. For appropriation revenues in excess of the estimated in the budget. Now therefore this ordinance. The city of Woodland Park, Colorado ordains that an ordinance entitled an ordinance adjusting expenditure appropriations to the various funds and the amounts. And for the purpose as set forth below for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the two thousand twenty four budget year and amending ordinance number fourteen sixty six. Series two thousand twenty three. B and the same is hereby adopted as follows. The two thousand twenty four amend budget for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, which is attached here to as exhibit A. And incorporated by this reference is hereby adopted and the monies are appropriated to the various funds as the same are budgeted. Effective date, this ordinance shall be in full. Force and effect from and after its publication as required by law. Passed by city council on second and final reading following the public hearing, the sixteenth day of May, two thousand twenty four.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. Suzanne?
Yes, Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, now item ten, we have no new business, so this takes us to reports. Mayor's report, I'd just like to share with you all, um, the C dot update that came. To the PPACG board of directors at our last meeting in April. Um, and with relation to. Woodland Park and Teller County area, um, here in Teller County, the US. Twenty four A resurfacing will be from Divide West as far as the money will go. Pick up where it left off last year and continue. Um, that is one item that is of importance to all of us, although it's Teller County. Um, and then the Colorado Highway sixty seven project north of Woodland Park improvements. Which would go, Aaron, help me. It goes all the way to, um, research or to, um. Tamarack Parkway. I think it goes to Tamarack Parkway.
And do you have anything to add or it, it's level gulch to Valley View?
Level gulch to Valley View. There we go. Thank you. Um, and that is being re-advertised. Later this year, because when they did advertise last time for bids, it came in double what the funding was. So they had to go back to the drawing board. They'll be re-advertising and then construction will be in twenty twenty five for that. We are doing the cities project. For the, uh, area where research is. Again, Ben, you can help me with this one or Aaron.
Yeah, we have been on Zoom to answer those questions.
Thank you. But that is happening starting this next week, I believe. So Ben, would you like to fill in the council on that, please?
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, mayor. Um, but yes, the, uh, the project that is going out to bid again for, that is C dot's project is going to be from highway twenty four. Up to Kelly's Road. And then our project, which is, you are correct that it's starting next week, will be from Valley View to Level Gold. So. Um, as folks drive north on highway sixty seven, they've probably seen this, the VMS signs out talking about the construction.
Thanks for your help. So that's what I have. The twenty four signal replacements you've seen are happening as well. At Trout Creek Road and then down at Paradise. And that's all I have from that side of the coin. And I have events. Bear with me, I'm doing this off of the chambers calendar. Uh, Woodland Park Wind Symphony Spring Concert is this Sunday, May nineteenth at seven PM. Doors open at six fifteen for refreshments at Church of the Nazarene on the corner of sixty seven and Evergreen Heights Road. Free admission, donations are welcome. That's on the nineteenth. Seven to eight fifteen PM. Again, the doors open at six fifteen. Um, the library district has summoning all magic, the gathering players. Teens and young adults swing by the teen room at the Woodland Park Public Library every Tuesday from four to six to play. And. Chamber office is closed for Memorial Day. Again, the magic players gathering. Um. Newmont Cripple Creek Mine has a quarter two open house. The thirtieth of May from five PM to six PM at the Cripple Creek District Museum. Citywide garage sale hosted by the Woodland Pike High School Key Club. And the high school park, in the high school parking lot. Spots are first come, first served. Vendors register with the link on the website for the chamber. Their community calendar. It is June first, seven AM to two PM. And then the Faithful Hearts Equine Learning Center has a volunteer orientation. If anyone would like to, uh. Volunteer for them, they are fostering connections between horses and people. Great group of folks, um. On June first, eleven to twelve, at the Faithful Hearts Equine Learning Center. And finally, I will share two more items because we're getting into June. The American Legion pig roast is. At the Cultural Center on June first. From eleven. The two for the silent auction and the pig roast is from noon to three. Everyone's welcome. Adults are fifteen dollars. Six to twelve years old is ten dollars and under six are free. And finally, the pride above the clouds, June second in Woodland Park. That is again, June second from ten AM to two PM at Memorial Park. That's all I have. Counsel? Catherine?
I have a couple of things. Um, let's see, schedule of events for this year's. Teller County Memorial Day activities are Saturday, May twenty fifth, nine AM, the Woodland Park Cemetery. We're placing small American flags on all veteran graves. Eleven AM is the Floriscent Grange Purple Heart Community Dedication at the Floriscent Grange. Wherever that is, I'm sorry, I don't know. Um, Sunday the twenty sixth, that eleven AM is the annual Buddy Poppy Drive at City Market. Monday, the twenty seventh, Memorial Day, seven AM, flags up in Lyons Park. Eleven AM is the annual community wide Memorial Day, um. Ceremony at the Woodland Park Cemetery and then at five PM, they'll take the flags down at Lyons Park.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
That wasn't on the chamber calendar.
No, it was not. And then I had a. Um, this was an item that we kind of addressed last year, but never, it kind of fell through the cracks, um, regarding the five G. Um, we can't do anything with the current one, but we had talked about creating a new ordinance that would let us. Dick limit where we, there are, uh, new tower was allowed to go, so there wouldn't be a new tower next to Summit or there wouldn't be a new tower next to. Some other sensitive area that we feel. Or the community feels. Um, so I need basically consensus to direct staff to maybe work on an ordinance for us on that.
Can you clarify this?
Yeah, I, what does I mean?
So when we did this last year, um, one of the biggest. Hiccups or not hiccups, one of the biggest problems was we don't have code. That says they can't put this tower twenty five feet from the aqua, from the pool. Other communities do have codes that say towers can only go in certain areas. So we can't undo what we, we can't undo the current tower. But going forward, if there's a new tower that wants to be put in place, we can say. We, if we have an ordinance, a new ordinance in place, we can say it can't go here, here or here.
So, so are you asking? Consensus to.
To direct staff to look into that, to plan. Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Council member, I'm Mayor Nakai. Um, we do have a draft prepared already by, um, Erica. Of Jeff's, of Jeff's office.
Okay.
And so we do have one prepared and we just have had it sitting here waiting. For council to let us know when they'd like to take a peek at it.
Has it been through planning? I mean, Karen has said, yeah, okay, this is what we're gonna do or is it, is it just come out of legal?
It's coming.
Comes up, okay.
One thing if I could add, mayor.
Yes.
We'd be happy to, you know, this thing is already under, in production. I didn't know that.
I didn't either, so, sorry, sorry for my.
We've had some testimony in the last couple of meetings about radio frequency emissions from these facilities. We are expressly preempted by federal law. From making a land use decision based on that. Full stop. So those that have problems with radio frequency emissions should, should talk to Congressman Lambord. That's whose jurisdiction it is, not ours.
Or the next congressman.
Or the FCC, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Suzanne.
The, um, and if council would like the title of the draft and it answers your question. Council member Jones, the draft title is an ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park. Amending Title Five of the Woodland Park Municipal Code. Regarding Wireless Communication Facility Regulations. To establish regulations for wireless communication facilities. I can send it to you on behalf of Jeff's firm and you guys can see if this is what you would like.
Perfect.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
That spoke left. And didn't know this, so pass it on, will you? Um, so I've been, um. Well, first of all, I wanted to say that I attended Chief Deisler's, uh, community engagement meeting on the eighth of May. Um, and the. CPW. Was there and I'm just, it's just a reminder to help keep wildlife wild. Um, if a, you find there's, it's fawn season, so if you see the fawns, uh. Appearing to be abandoned in the corner of your yard, please leave them alone. Um. After twenty four hours, it's okay to call chief or call CPW. If you see an injured deer, um, if it can walk, let it. Um, if it's, if it can't walk, again, call Chief Deisler. Or the CPW, they'll come take care of it for you. Um, I've been, um, kind of on a mission downtown with, uh, visiting with businesses. Just to kind of, uh, be ready to hit the ground running if and slash when Main Street comes back. And it's, what started out as feeling like a project has ended up being really fun. It's really, it's been really fun to meet these business, small business owners. And. You know, just to ask questions about, well, how are things going for you? Where do you feel like you can, you need some support? Um, you know, there's only so much that we can do. But also in digging into educating myself about Colorado Main Street. There is a lot that we can do, uh, through Main Street. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of just posting things. Uh, I'm gonna try to do it once a week, post a few of the businesses that I visit, um, just to get the word out there. Um. One of the questions is, what are you, what are you doing to help yourself? How are you promoting your business? Um, you know, do you have a presence on social media, et cetera? Um. And so anyway, just trying to figure out how, how everything's going and how we might be, uh, able to support these small businesses in town. Uh, so they're ongoing visits. It's going to take a minute, probably. Uh, so they're ongoing visits. It's gonna take a minute, probably if I do four, five, six, seven, eight a week, which is what it's been so far. Um, it's gonna take some time, but I've encouraged people, businesses, if if you are getting impatient and you think I should be there sooner. Please just reach out to me and I'll make an effort to skip some people and I have my own order, but anyway. So those will be ongoing. And then the only other thing I think I wanted to talk about is is kind of the same along the same things as Kath is.
Catherine's.
Okay, Catherine, um. And that is talk to you guys, the the um Ben's working, Ben and his crews are working really hard and and long on the potholes, the parking lots at Safeway and at City Market continue to be hazardous. Not only to human beings and their safety, but to their vehicles and the damage that they're causing. I don't know if it's legal or not, but I just wondered if anybody would be interested in asking Jeff's our attorney's firm into looking at potential ordinances slash fines for private commercial property owners not my maintaining their their parking.
Absolutely.
Well, I know that it's been done in fair play. So I I don't know. What what do you guys think about it?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Excuse me, you said it you that you believe have been done at fair play.
I believe something.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. Thank you.
Yeah, might have been one of your lawyers that did it. Saying.
Is there any consideration, though? I mean, it's private property. Is there any consideration to just ask them or talk, you know?
Ben has been in contact with both of them and and Ben apparently also has the authority to shut the parking lots down. Um, so he I'm sure he doesn't want to do that. I don't think that's gonna get anywhere. Um, but I I'd just like to see some some movement on it.
I don't know. I can say that we've we've addressed this before with the parking lot between Wendy's and what's now the Community Partnership. Um, I don't know if it was last year or the year before. There was quite a crater there and I don't remember exactly the process we went through, but I'm sure there's staff here that does.
Okay. So we have tenants over there. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The tenants over there said that they have been notified that the the City Market lot is supposed to be repaved in June. Um, and then I got word that Safeway had started, but not any, not in any portion that I have ever driven over. So just an idea, just an idea.
Maybe you could let the council know what what that looked like and what it might look like.
Um, Jason Myers, former city attorney, uh worked with the property owner at uh Gold Hill South on that between Wendy's and Community Partnership. I don't recall what the what what actually happened, but I know he worked with him, sending them a letter so we could look at.
Sent them a letter and they fixed it.
There you go.
We also go.
There you go. Anyway, my last piece of my report is that my mission tonight was to make as many enemies as possible. You're welcome.
Jeff. All right. So first, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Case for announcing the first annual Pride Above the Cloud Celebration is just a quick reminder that's a Sunday, June sixth from ten A M. To two P M. They're gonna have food fun June second. Yeah, that's what I said. No, if I did, I didn't mean to. Um, June second, uh, they're gonna have food fun and activities for all ages. So I encourage um, and anyone and everyone to to come out um uh on June second. I know I'll be there. Um, second, a reminder that May is wildfire awareness month. Um, so despite the relative wet weather we've been having lately. The weather experts, um, if you want to call them that, uh, tell us that La Niña is coming back, which typically means for the Western U S, we dry out a little bit as we go into the summer and the fall. So please uh keep um safe uh fire practices in in your minds. Uh, the third thing I have, um, I'd like to get a consensus from council. This seems to be the theme tonight. Uh, to bring ordinance number fourteen seventy one, series twenty twenty four, famously known as the uh su school sales tax uh to the agenda for the next meeting. The ordinance uh was originally motioned to be continued till July eighteenth at the March twenty first council meeting. But I would like to get a consensus from council to um direct staff to or not direct staff, but to put on, put the ordinance back on the agenda for next council meeting rather than waiting till July.
Uh, that's a no for me. I'd rather continue to hear from citizenry and give it some time.
Yeah. I'd rather leave it as it is right now because there's data for me to collect and citizens can still.
I I would have to agree with that too, since I I think I may have been the sponsor of that ordinance back in the day.
I think you were, yeah.
Yeah, I I would like an opportunity for the community to weigh in on that. This is, this is, I mean, I I appreciate what happened tonight. It was a movement forward. And and I how can any of us question the numbers and the percentages that were presented by um uh the V O E president and the superintendent? But it boils down to the 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 influence we have as council is over that sales tax and and its future. Um, and when we decided to continue it to the July meeting, I think there was a lot of consideration given to some of the upcoming um requirements for the council in terms of meetings, like we've got the C M L conference coming up. We've got um, we won't meet uh the week, the fourth of July. So this was just to give us time to to make that um make that transition into considering something that's gonna be very, very uh important to the community. So I I appreciate that. I I like to come to resolution as quickly as possible, but I think we need to give the community time to just to root be reminded the election's over. Um, and it's now time to get down to the serious business of of uh whether or not we're gonna continue that tax, modify that tax or end the tax.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, um, what what more? So we've we've kind of been, we as citizens have been kind of hearing about this for a couple of years and I'm just wondering what are other information you're you are interested in gathering? Um, and I think that July was originally set up for this presentation that got bumped up to tonight. Is that not right?
No, the we we had invited the the board to come earlier than that. We'd asked them to to and and it was in consideration of their budget um budget cycle. Uh, so they could uh have time to to prepare the budget cycle. But I I'll tell you, um, Councilman Baldwin, what I'm I'm most concerned about is when I hear a comment that if you end this tax, uh, children will go hungry and dogs will be running in the streets and yeah. I want facts. I want to know, okay, if it does end, how would you rearrange your budget? Uh, would you, you know, don't don't threaten anybody or any teacher with termination because the evil city council canceled that tax. I want it. I want them to come back to us and tell us. All right, tell us, you know, you told us how you're gonna spend it. If it were to end, what would happen and how would you accommodate that? That and and I don't think we could do that by the next meeting. They can't do that by the next meeting.
Well, I would, I'd like to just make a comment on that, too. I I believe this this tax was put in place by a vote of the people. Um, and I I believe in my heart of hearts that if the people desire that to go away, that the people should bring that to the vote of the people. I think that the the I G A is very limited in in the in authority that we have. And so um I know we have the opinion of our suit attorney that we could do that, we could do that. But is that really our place? To rescind something that was put in place by a vote of the people? So that's just a thought that I would like to share with you all to keep in mind as we have now analyzed that and think about that.
And 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 I appreciate that, Mayor Case, and what I I would uh hope that would happen by July when we have the the initial posting and then or actually won't be the initial posting, sorry. The continuation um that there are other options, obviously. Um, and we can discuss, okay, do we want to as a council refer it to another ballot initiative? That would be an option.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, but.
So just keep that in mind in your thought process because there are there are more than one way to, there is more than one way to skin a cat.
Can we can we have public, uh, can we have discussion as a council about specifically what information we would would satisfy our curiosity about their budget and how the money's being spent? Um, can we? I mean, can we lay down some some real clear structure about what we're what we're looking for? And in order to make a decision about what and and not only what we're looking for, but actually get the information. Hard information instead of this this nebulous stuff that I'm anyway. So that then we can, then the citizens can make a decision about what you know, what is is it gonna be a citizens initiative to take it away? Is it going to be it's on pause until whatever? You know what I'm saying? It just seems like the the information is just kind of all over the place.
May I make a suggestion? Um, we can put this on the agenda for future discussion as a discussion on or we could schedule a work session to have that conversation. Would you use that? What would the council like?
Awesome. We have the correct information.
I I think a work session is appropriate and 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 I think we would invite district personnel to attend that work session. So we we can talk about it. We, as everyone knows, we had a work session to discuss the I G A. The I G A is simply a a means of uh identifying how the tax would be collected on behalf of the school district and uh the requirements for reporting. Uh, there it's really not much more than that.
Right.
Uh, so i- if if we've got concerns about how the you know, tell it, you know, we we've we've you know, I'll use this terminology. We've laid the gauntlet down and said, okay. If you don't ship up or shape up, you're gonna ship out and and that's that's not a a fair, a fair characterization of this relationship. The point of the matter is we're collecting tax from taxpayers and then distributing it back to the school district for their use. Um, we do as a council have the authority to terminate that because we initiated the ballot initiative.
Yes.
We we we're the ones who put it on the ballot. We can do that. But is that is that the right answer?
No, and that is not not at all what I would like to do at all. But I also feel it's incumbent upon somebody to be get to the bottom of the shenanigans.
It and it goes back to, um, there are some terrific historical documents. Um, I I I know I have some and I can certainly share them with the council is how did how did we get to that vote in two thousand sixteen? How how were the citizens convinced very with a a very strong uh show that they wanted that tax for a very specific reason? I think the question now, you know, this many years on is, is it still being used for that reason? And if it's not, how how do we deal with that? How do we protect our taxpayers? We we are the representatives of those taxpayers. Um, so I I think that a work session is is appropriate before we go into a public hearing or the continuation of the public hearing. We just need to decide what are the parameters or what 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 who who's going to do the presentation? Who's going to who's going to give us the you know, what are the milestones? What you know, do we need to go back to, you know, ancient history and have a a previous school board president, president and uh, I know uh the the current dean of uh uh Merritt Academy was very involved in that community group. Um, you know, go back to why did this come about? How did how did the citizens believe it was the right thing? And if it's no longer the right thing, what what is the next step? And we're very constrained in a public hearing, so maybe a work session is appropriate, Mayor.
Suzanne, could you call the council and see what might work for a future work session?
Absolutely.
And I have no objection to doing a work session. Um, you know, my I guess to some level, you know, how many more opportunities do we grant before we say, you know, enough is enough?
Well, and that's part of the conversation.
Oh, absolutely. But yeah, and the only reason why I was asking for consensus to bring it up is you know, I and and I think you made a great point, Carol, about C M L coming up and the way that's gonna affect our meetings in June going into July. The only reason why I made I was looking for consensus consensus to bring it up is I'm kind of one of those people that, you know, I I have enough data. I mean, I I don't know how much, you know, more times we have to keep going around this merry go round on it. Um, you know, it's uh and but I I certainly want to make it clear that I could not possibly support public input on this anymore. Um, you know, I I think the public should have every opportunity to comment on this as as much as possible. Um, and I and but, you know, I I just think also at some level, it's incumbent upon us as council to protect, to your point, the taxpayers' interest. And, you know, what we saw tonight was not protecting the taxpayers' interest in any way, shape or form. Um, so you know, I'm okay doing a work session. I'm certainly okay with leaving the ordinance table until July. Um, but you know, the reason why I brought it up is I just think it at some point, you know, we've we've got to kind of come to a resolution on this. Uh, the community is very vocal in in their desire for us to come to a resolution on this. So that's that's my last thought on it.
Thank you.
Let it go.
All right.
And that was and that was it for me.
Thank you. Jordan, what what did you want Suzanne to do the? Would you do the poll for us?
Yeah, I'll send you a doodle poll.
Thank you.
I'll give you some dates. Um. We have limited time.
Well, and and understand that it it probably is going to be July before we get into a work session because.
Well, is there is there an option to do a non council night work session?
Certainly.
So to try to get it at that time.
Yeah, I I I'm up at zero four thirty every day.
I'm up at five. She's four thirty.
So we could, if we run into the date that this was tabled to, we can kick the can down the road to gap provide the opportunity for us to have the conversation about what the right thing is to do. So with that. I'll leave it in your capable hands.
Sure, I will send out, um, I'll come up with different dates and we'll do the doodle poll and we'll see if we can get a consensus on a date.
Thank you.
And that's across. You're you're also, are you doing that with the school board? Too? Because the work session is isn't a joint work session we're talking about or just us?
I think it, in my opinion, I think it should be us. And and if people have, I mean, we've had reports from previous boards before that were acceptable. Let's, if we have those, let's see what those look like. And see if that helps answer the question. Does that sound reasonable?
Is the consensus for just a council work session or like Councilmember Jones said for combined?
I I, yeah, I don't. Well, I don't want to have another discussion with just us because we don't have the data.
Well, I don't want to have a discussion where Brad Miller is the only one talking either, so.
That we can orchestrate that, right?
Um, so I I I mean, I I wasn't real impressed with the last work session we had with them. Now, that's my personal opinion. So we can certainly have a work session where it's us and have invite them.
This is not, this is, this forum and reports is not the proper place for us to be having this conversation. It's for us to bring things up that we need to schedule and work on. An agenda.
I disagree. I I was trying to understand what kind of work session this was. That's all.
So it are my marching orders just council or combined?
Do you want to do a doodle poll with it?
As to what you guys.
As to what we want, whether we want it with or without.
Doodle pull the heck out of you.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Two things, uh, before I do the D D A report, one of the things I was going to do when we made a motion, I was anticipating we were gonna have some debate um, on the motion to appoint Carol. And I wanted to read into the record um that we received ten uh emails, if you will, electronic communications from folks within the community, all endorsing Carol um for the appointee to council. Those and those people were Lori Glof, Steve Randolph, Dave Butterey, Holly Sample, uh Craig Nelson, Carol Greenstreet, Gail Garrig, Randy Matthews, Tony Perry and Tamara Butterey. So we did get some substantial support and endorsements from the community. We received, we received zero, no offense to anybody, but we did not receive endorsements for anybody else. Also, I know one of the citizens uh indicated we should go to Ohio's. Ohio's vote. Um, I will say Jerry's here tonight. Uh, Jerry would, would have been that next person. Unless we argued it was a council vote, that would have been Frank. Neither of those individuals applied. Okay. D D A, you guys heard um, about Netco and the, and the ladder truck, all good stuff. We did have a Tava update and so I do want to let you guys know, um, let the public know as well. Uh, that city council is going to be meeting weekly now with the Tava crew, which is great. Um, with the developers, uh, looking to, to continue to advance the cause. There's been.
City staff?
City staff, yeah.
Thank you.
Will be meeting, yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah. Um, and then the last thing we talked about was the, what they're, I guess they're calling it the Voss Building. I didn't notice that. The Martini Hut thing. Um, but Chair Perry did reach out to the owner. Um, we are, the D D A is, is concerned about the appearance of that building and, and its condition. So there is effort um, on their part to try to uh, resolve that in some way.
Excellent.
So I'll keep you updated on those.
Thank you. Mister Smith, Smith?
Well, did my first meeting with the historical preservation uh, last week. It's really interesting. It's gonna be really fun, I think. And they're going to be doing a cleanup at the cemetery. I forget what it's called. That's over at the golf course. Yeah, they're going to be doing a cleanup, preparing, you know, things. They just got to get access to it first. Also, this week has been pretty entertaining. I've had. Right here, this gentleman right here is Henry Hernandez and he's from the Dominican Republic. And he is representative from there. He, I invited him out. He came out and I took him to City Hall. Turned the whole place. He is just. Like little kid in the candy shop. Then to make it even worse, I took him to the fire department. He, again, boom. Took him all to the uh, Aquatic Center. He's just speechless. Then finished up over at, uh, with uh, Chief Chris over there, over at the police department. Because he's also in the military over there. So everywhere he went. He got new fresh ideas that he is actually reporting back to. All his heads of hey, we need to start thinking about this or this and this. So his visit here and with the help of, you know, our community and our facilities. Is really going to help, you know, the D N R. So that was really cool.
Good for you.
But the bad thing is, he looked at his driver's license this morning and. Missed up the dates and couldn't rent a car because his driver's license was expired.
Oh, no.
So now we're on a, putting him on a plane tomorrow. Yeah, had a great time, man. May twenty-third is the. Uh, thing over at the memorial, the memorial park here for the uh, the senior barbecue.
Yeah, see, that's what happens when I don't get a, an event list.
That's why we're here.
Thank you.
I, well, I obviously have no reports. I understand that we still need a liaison to the keep Woodland Park beautiful committee. And I'd be glad to take that um, position.
We were saving that just for you.
I, I thought so.
I think we call it voluntold.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm pretty good at picking up trash.
Council, are you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Um, and, and, and we'll discuss it an- another time. Um, if the city council wants to continue to have a military liaison, I, I would be happy to do that. But that's not an official liaison position and um. Kelly, you and I can talk about that later. And then finally, a, 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 a heartfelt thanks to the council for um. Having confidence to reappoint me to uh, fill this vacancy. Uh, I can't tell you how um, pleased I am that you believe I have something to continue to contribute. Um, and just for the record, I, none of these people are my friends, but you know, that's another story altogether. Uh, and I hope to become friends with all of you. Um, but um, going forward, I, I, I hope I do contribute. And um, one of the questions that was asked of me earlier is, would I be willing to be a mentor? Of course I will, but. As my husband would probably warn you, not everything I will tell you is the right thing to do. So just keep that in mind. Again, thank you and thank you to, to those who supported me uh, via those endorsements. Those are very, very special to me. Thank you.
All right. Um, I just want to have a, a go back. Um, I did attend the Purple Heart dedication for the Purple Heart Trail at Karis this morning. Noel, it was at one, so it was afternoon. And uh, I actually met Mr. Womack for the first time and uh, actually sat by him. For some reason, they felt like I needed to sit next to him at the event, but it was great. We had John Bartlett, who had just been released from the hospital last night from being, having pneumonia. He was there. He's very dedicated and we had two other uh, locals that were uh, Purple Heart recipients. One of them received three and shared a very heartfelt and disturbing story. From his time in Vietnam. And um, so it was a, it was a great ceremony. And uh, they have a new cafeteria with a new chef and the food was delicious. And um, anyway, it was uh, it was a great ceremony. We have one more Purple Heart. Contribution in our community. And that's all. City Attorney. City Manager, where are you there?
I'm right here. I do have a few.
You do have some things.
I do have a few presentations for you all. Sorry. Uh, I'll start with the sales tax update that we had for March, sales tax received in April. Uh, let's see here. All right, so um, as we thought might be the case, in March, we were down uh, two point eight percent year over year. And I do attribute this to the large snowstorm that we had. It does seem to have affected um, our local businesses here and definitely affected the sales tax. Um, so year to date so far, we've received um, one million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, which puts us up one point five percent over last year. Um, and lodging tax has been uh, pretty much holding consistent at about down fifteen percent for the year. So I'm not going to go into much detail on that one, but uh, for the sales tax, you can see that that was the. First year, if you look at March here, the first year that we've been down year over year since last September, which was kind of an anomaly from. A large spike we had seen in twenty-two. So. That's pretty much it for the sales tax. Um, I do expect it to recover um, and go back to what we were seeing. I think March was an anomaly with that, that large snowstorm that we had. All right, let me get out of this one. Any questions on that?
Go ahead, Erin.
Okay, sorry about that. Let's see. Look, I'll go away. Okay, let's do this. All right, and next for you, I have the year end report. There we go. Sorry, my PowerPoint seems to have frozen on me here.
Erin, while you look for that, do you want us to do it? Okay, you got it.
Go, yeah, if, if you and the chief and Kip would like to do your updates first, we can do that and then I can come to this at the end.
Okay. I, I guess Kip, you want to go first?
Sure. Uh, quick update on utility billing. Um, we continue to uh, get phone calls. Uh, our, our message to our customers isn't as clear as we would like it, that what we've learned. Um, so learning, some learning lessons with that. Uh, but I would like to give a shout out to Kristen with the social media blast. She's also prepared some articles for the newspaper. So thank you for that. Um, so hopefully that'll provide more clarification on the billing. Just want to be clear that the message we send out was not a bill. There was no charges on that card. It was just a message. Um, so if people are listening, it's not a bill. Please be patient. You will receive a bill, I promise. Uh, so uh, more to come on that. We'll continue to update you as, as, as we go through this. Um, but in two weeks exactly from today, uh, you'll see staff out reading meters uh, for the big push. So customers will receive their water bill. Uh, June third is the um, estimated date for their, their bill. So. Thank you.
See, I was here to help rescue you. I was going to tell you about the barbecue, so you're good. First shameless plug, uh, Councilmember Baldwin's gone, but she did mention our community engagement forum meeting. So I'll use that now to invite everyone who has not had the opportunity. Second Wednesday of the month, six o'clock, P D, come see us. Going strong now for over two years. Uh, we have a good time. Come learn what we're doing and how we're working for you. So back to the end of school barbecue, twenty-third, two to four thirty, come out, get some food. We have some games. Partnering with some great folks with the sheriff's office. U-Pass Health and Netco. Should be a great time. Weather holds out, we'll be doing great. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. And if you have kids, bring them out, grab a hot dog and a drink and spend some time with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have uh, two things this evening before Erin goes. I just want to remind council and the public of the new, the council dates, the upcoming council meetings. We have council on Ju- uh, June sixth. And then we've canceled and we have council on June twenty-seventh. We have no council on July fourth and we have council on July eighteenth. So just a reminder of the rescheduled dates. I do have um, an item I just need to correct for the record. When um, some of you, three of, three out of the seven of you were here in March, on March twenty-first, on the consent calendar. For the council agenda, the council approved a contract for crack seal and chip seal. In the amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars. It's come to our attention that that was a mistake, that was a typo. And the good news is. Ben had the contract and all the detail behind the staff report was fine. Everything was fine. It was just the agenda item. The um, dollar amount was incorrect. The correct amount should have been a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. So we're just correcting that for the record and Ben is on if anyone has any questions.
That went in the right direction.
There you go.
Thank you, Suzanne.
And now Erin's ready.
Go ahead, Erin.
Okay, Ben.
All right. Thanks, Ben. All right, let's. I don't know what is going on. It's still.
It's not meant to be.
Yeah, the PowerPoint is still not cooperating here. I don't know. Let me try it one more time to close it and reopen it. And if that doesn't work, we may have to do this next time.
It's super late where you are.
I don't know.
Computer's off duty.
Yeah, it, it, it said enough is enough for today.
I actually saw it on the screen like two minutes ago.
I know.
It wasn't moving. Can you do interpretive dance?
I can try it. Okay, let me see here.
We need a recording of the Jeopardy song.
Yeah, would it make it easier if we started Jeopardy theming you or?
Erin could, Erin could take care of that. Jeopardy song.
All right, I hope this is worth the wait. All right, let's see.
Show us the year end report. PowerPoint just.
All right, are we seeing it? All right, I'm going to hope that this, aha, all right, there we go. Okay, so this is the two thousand twenty-three year end report. Okay, so for general funds, two thousand twenty-three budget versus actuals. We had a beginning fund balance to start off two thousand twenty-three of four million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Uh, we had budgeted revenues of fourteen million, four hundred and six thousand. We ended up closing the year out at fifteen million, one hundred and fifty-two. Um, I'll go into the details on this a little bit, but a lot of this difference here comes from the D D A paying us back five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. Uh, loan repayment, which was recorded as miscellaneous revenue. So that's, that's a lot of what makes up that big difference in our revenue. And then expenditures, we started the year off with fourteen million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And we ended the year with thirteen million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand. That's largely due to um. Staffing shortages. Um, so our ending projected balance was supposed to be four point eight million. And we ended up uh, with an ending fund balance of six million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, more than what I had projected at the end of the year when I did the budget. Um, so that leaves us with an unrestricted fund balance at the end of two thousand twenty-three of five million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, and a total ending fund balance of that six million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand. So uh, pretty. Pretty good shape there with the ending fund balance. Uh, this is the, the breakdown by department of the general fund expenditures. And you can see the, the budget numbers versus the actuals and then a comparison from two thousand twenty-two. Um, I will say that the, you can see here, a big difference between twenty-three and twenty-two is that last year in twenty-two, we paid off. Um, an additional two point four million in debt service. Um, and so that's why you can see here, we were down seventy-nine percent year over year. Our total operating expenditures came in at ninety-one percent of what was budgeted. And our total, including the, the school district pass-through and our transfers came in at ninety-four percent of our budgeted allotment. So hopefully this year, we will be a little bit more fully staffed and we'll see those numbers be a little bit closer to what we actually budgeted. But that's, that's what makes up the majority of the differences when you look at these line items and administration and court and. Police, I mean, this is what makes up a lot of the, the big differences and why we were under budget there. Any questions on this slide before I move on? All right. Okay, so general fund revenues. Most of our core revenues, the property tax and the sales tax percentages, those came in almost exactly at what we had budgeted. So property tax is ninety-eight percent, which that's pretty standard to have about two percent non-collection. Uh, sales tax and the school tax are, are exactly the same at about ninety-nine point four percent there. Uh, and then, like I said before, what makes up, I'm going to skip through this. This part is it doesn't really have much impact on the overall budget, but this next. Part over here, investment earnings were way up because the, the interest rates were much higher than they had been in previous years. So we had budgeted about twenty thousand and it came in two hundred and twenty thousand and like. And like I said, the, the miscellaneous revenue came back tremendously higher because of the D D A uh, early debt payoff there. Um, so our total, our total revenues for the year came in at fifteen million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, which was up six percent over the year before. And was a hundred and five percent over the budgeted amount. All right, um, culture and rec fund. This is a, wh- whatever the culture and rec fund doesn't actually make in revenue to cover their expenditures. The general fund covers as a pass-through. So you can see here that the revenues and expenditures always match, whether it's budget or actuals. So our budgeted revenues for the year were one point three million dollars. And we pretty much came in at ninety-nine percent of that revenue projection at one point three. Uh, million, uh, almost exist.
I think we lost you, if you're still there. All right. We'll finish up next time. All right, we'll finish up next time. Yes, just ask that we get copies of those slides. Thank you. Anything else, council? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.